You'll just, and you can, you don't have to do this right this second. Push the button, you'll see it turn red and then the mic is on.
Okay.
All right, we will call the order, the Tuesday, September 3rd Committee of the Whole. First, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the August 29th Committee of the Whole meeting. All right, and...
Second.
Okay, I think I moved with the... All right, so all those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes. All right, so we have, on the agenda tonight is the purpose of working on Resolution 2024-48, which would, we would, after we finish our interviews, be moving to insert a name. Tonight is the first night of those interviews, and we have our first candidate with us. Tonight, each of the interviews is about, gonna be about 25 minutes, that gives us about a five-minute gap in between. And with three minutes ahead of the game here, we'll go and get started. So first, I'd like to welcome Ms. Allison Welch, who is our first candidate for the Ward II appointment. Welcome, Allison.
Thank you.
All right, so the way this will work, so you have the, you know, the challenge of going first, so we'll try to take it easy on you here, is, we're gonna start with a couple, just hopefully, simple questions. We'll go through council members, we'll probably ask you some. I know we've all had a chance to look over your cover letter and your resume, which were the two things we asked to be submitted, and have looked at some of your experience. So first, a couple of basic questions. So for council, typically, council members can work essentially as much or as little as they like, and that their constituents will let them get away with. Typically, though, council members work around 20 hours a week on council business that's outside of any other political activities or campaigning or anything like that. We typically, we always meet on the first and third Monday, unless it falls in a holiday, like today. That usually is 5:30, starting as early as 5:30 on Mondays, can go until business is done, which sometimes during budget season can be into the wee hours of the morning. So, given understanding that schedule, as well as the sort of workload expected of you, does that feel like something that you'll be able to commit to?
Yes, right now, I'm working for the Metro Parks, and it's a seasonal position, so I'm working full-time, four days a week, it's 10-hour days. So I have three free days a week, and then I'm only hired through December, so I can also be flexible with my hours in that way, too.
Great. And then, this is a little bit of an unusual appointment. Because of the time left on the appointment, the appointee would serve through the end of this year, and then be running next year if they wanted to keep the seat, and be elected, and then if they were elected by the voters, would serve a two-year term to complete this four-year cycle, and then would run again if they wanted to keep the seat for a four-year term. So it would be running for that two-year term after the first year. So, understanding all that, just wanted to make sure that you've got that laid out there. Okay, and then, a couple other sort of basic questions. How long have you lived in Lakewood?
I've lived in Lakewood for 14 years, so since 2010.
And do you know how long you've lived in Ward II?
I've lived in Ward II since 2012, so 12 years.
Okay. And then, can you tell us a little bit about your experience working, serving the Lakewood community, ways you've been engaged in the community, in either volunteer capacity or in other ways?
Sure, so when I first came to Lakewood in 2010, I came from the Peace Corps in Nicaragua. I was an education volunteer. And I moved into the community because I got a job with the Positive Education Program at the, it was at St. James at the time. But anyway, so when I moved here, I came from kind of a rural community, and I was used to having chickens all around me all the time. So I was part of the Hens in Lakewood Committee, like, right from the beginning. So we had some meetings that we had at the Lakewood Library, and then, you know, there were different council meetings we went to and talked about hens in Lakewood. So I did that for a while, took a step back when I got, when I went to graduate school, because it was a few years of working on that, but then came back and actually spoke at the Housing Committee meeting one time. Also, you know, a lot of my community, my community involvement has been in kind of greater Cleveland area with, you know, working for Cleveland schools and things like that. So, in Lakewood itself, I would like to be more involved in some of the things, but, let's see. When, so when Wagler Park was being reconstructed, I came and spoke to council at that time as well about, including some artwork that reflected the diversity of our community. And, so I was involved in, with that, and kind of, I was, you know, not really outspoken about anything, but I did show up to the meetings in the park and things like that. And then, since I resigned from teaching in June, I sent plans for the Lakewood, or the Hilliard Square Theater space over on Madison. I know that it's being sold now, but at the time, it was part of one of my projects with the Lower Aiden County Community College Program I'm with, which is the Sustainable Agriculture Program. So I kind of made some building plans and sent them to Jason Shakner, who sent them to Amanda Kramer, and then I got in touch with Jill Bartolata, and so, been kind of in contact with some different people here, so, yeah.
And you do some community gardening as well?
Yes, I'm in the, this year, I started, my wife and I started a plot at Madison Park, so, yeah. It's been a lot of fun.
Great, good to hear. All right, good, councilmembers, yeah, Councilmember Rader.
Thank you, Madam President, and sort of just to follow on your line of questioning, you know, and thank you for being here. Tom leaned over to me, this is kind of an intimidating setting, isn't it? The six of us kind of staring down at you. Relax, doing a great job, same with all the other candidates. We're just here to get to know you a little bit better, and I really appreciate you putting your name on the dotted line and submitting your materials and being here tonight. Following along that same line of questioning, can you give me a sense of, well, first off, council is certainly a community service-oriented job, do a lot of constituent services. We're also leaders within the community, we're listening to folks, trying to create rules, trying to do things that make Lakewood better. Can you give me a sense, when you had some type of leadership capacity, what you've learned and how you would apply those lessons to this role?
Absolutely, so in 2017, I was contacted by one of my college professors to start at high school in the Cleveland Metropolitan School District. So I was one of the founding members of Campus International High School. And that was a way for me to work as a team, to kind of build a school from nothing. And so, you know, I was part of building the Special Education Department, and we worked on all different decision-making, also about like, the culture of the school, the values that we were trying to get the students to be in line with. We were very international-minded, so we like, set up cultural months, so we had different cultures that we celebrated each month. And I also founded the GSA at that school, so the Gender and Sexuality Alliance. And I continued that throughout my teaching in Cleveland. So, it was, it was awesome to be part of the decision-making process, and also, like, seeing the, you know, the school be built as we were, as we were rolling with teaching, so.
That's great, and how would that apply here? What, how would you translate those skills into a Ward II council member position?
I think a lot of it has to do with working as a team. So like, listening to what, you know, like, we were listening to the parents and the students and what they were, what they wanted out of their school. And here, we would be talking to constituents, and talking to business owners, and, you know, all different, like, shareholders in the community to get different perspectives on what, what they see for the future of Lakewood, or for, in that case, it was the school.
Very good, thank you.
Yeah.
Councilman Baker.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Welch, and I, every day I go to work and I see the beautiful work that the Zoo Horticulture Team does, so thank you. You guys do a wonderful job, and the article in Plain Dealer was really cool recently.
Yeah!
So thank you for, like Councilman Rader said, I wish we could like, be in a more informal setting, but audiovisual is important, we want to make sure everyone can see this, so we don't mean to be sitting higher than you, we're just trying to have a conversation. And I appreciate you putting yourself out there, this isn't easy. One question I have, and they could be concentric circles, or they could be opposite, or kind of how you view the world, but what do you think, so this term, it'd be for roughly 15 months. What are, what's the biggest thing you think you can accomplish as it relates to Ward II, and then kind of the biggest thing you think city council has coming up? And how we can, you know, you can help Ward II, and the Ward II specific issue are generally citywide. How do you, like, what do you think that is? How do you think you can help, and where do you see it going in 15 months?
Thank you for that question. So, there's a lot of building projects coming up. And I was at the Cove Community Center when we were talking about the downtown development and all that. I think that it would be really helpful to focus on sustainability in the building plans. I know that's one of the different aspects of the buildings that we're trying to do, but I didn't hear very, a lot of specifics about that. So I would like to see sustainable features, and, you know, I think it would be good for the community to see sustainable features in all of the new buildings that are coming up. I know there's a lot of different ones in, in Ward II as well, lots of different properties we're looking at. So, that's one of the things. Another, I just, you know, always looking at the parks, I love the parks. I look right out at the park from my house, so, you know, I would like to also see more, you know, I love the things that have been happening, actually. So there's rain gardens, and there's, you know, things like that. But I don't know if everybody's like, aware of that, so a little more education with, with what's going on with the, with the sustainable features that exist, even maybe some, some educational signs or things like that would be helpful, so that the community knows what's happening, you know.
Thank you.
Councilman Marx.
Thanks, Allison, so do you still have your hens?
Yes.
Oh, good for you. I should come visit sometime.
Yeah!
I don't have hens, but I was certainly, I'm a strong proponent of hens.
Yeah, I remember you from the meetings, yeah.
So thanks for being here tonight, and for having the courage to submit your application for Ward II City Council.
Thank you.
Takes a lot of courage to step out on the skinny branches for the first time, so I acknowledge that for you. This kind of piggybacks on a little bit what Councilman Baker had asked. What do you, what do you see that are the most challenging issues in Ward II? You've been a resident there for 12 years, I think you said. What would you describe are the most compelling issues that need to be addressed in Ward II?
So, in our ward, we have a lot of small businesses. My mom was a small business owner in Ward II for a few years. And we have Uptown Lakewood, and we've got some downtown areas, too. I know a lot of them are changing all the time, you know, we've got storefronts opening, storefronts closing. And we do have some resources in the city to, to help small businesses. I would like to see that, you know, we're making a strong connection with the businesses that are there, so that they stay longer, and they are more part of the community, so that's part of it. Also, you know, there's a lot of businesses that have closed, and they've taken a long time, like the Buick Dealer at the end of my street, it's taken a long time for anything to get moving on that. And so I would like to just kind of see what we can do to get, to get some projects completed.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here tonight.
Thanks.
Councilwoman Strebit.
Thank you, President Keppel, and thank you for Ms. Welch for applying for this position. I, too, was a seasonal worker with the Cleveland Metro Park, so I am very interested to hear more about zoo horticulture, and to hear what that is, actually, and to, to tell me a little bit about that, and also to tell me about any challenges that you're having there, and how you're overcoming those.
So, yeah, this year, so I, I resigned after 16 years of teaching, and I joined the Sustainable Agriculture Program at L3C. And so I was looking for a job, I've always kind of liked the Metro Parks, it's a huge organization. I like how they manage land, and I like, I would like to be part even, even more of a decision-maker within the Metro Parks. But right now, I got my foot in the door in the Horticulture Department at the zoo. It's, it's an awesome job, it's so much fun. We get to plant new garden beds, I, I help, you know, just maintain the general, the look of the, of the garden beds, and any, any plants that are there. I spend a lot of time this summer, since it's been so dry, on the water truck, watering everything. We do some sustainable things there, too, which make me so happy. So there is, there is like, a water collection on the carousel there. So when it rains, it fills up a cistern, and then we fill that into the water truck, and we go around and water all of the plants with that. And, you know, there's other things that are a little challenging that I'd like to improve upon. We use a lot of gas power, and that's something, you know, there's, there's battery-powered things now, you know, like, like leaf blowers and things like that. And so I would like to see a little bit more of those sustainable tools used. But, in general, I absolutely love what we're doing, and I like that it's a lot of people with different experiences. We work, we also work with the animals, so we go in the enclosures and clean them up, and we also bring them branches from different Metro Parks to feed the elephants and rhinos and giraffes and all the other ones. So we collect browse, that's what, it's called collecting browse. And so it's, it's a cool place, it's a lot of different people with, you know, from landscaping backgrounds, from biology backgrounds, from sustainability backgrounds, all working together. And I absolutely love just kind of hearing everybody's perspective on what we're doing, and like, their ideas for the future. Even when it's just like, something simple as like, oh, are we gonna do a native pollinator garden? Or just, you know, just a pollinator garden? We talk about what that means, you know, as we, as we go, it's very cool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Book.
Thank you, hi Allison.
Hi.
Thanks for being here, and I do kind of feel like I'm in an Oppenheimer hearing. Great, great movie, but probably a little bit formal for this conversation. But anyway, thank you for your engagement on the hens issue. It was really Councilwoman Marx and another former council colleague, Sam Maleri, who finally got that through, but some of us were working for some years. I'm kind of your neighbor around the corner, I had no clue that you had five hens in the backyard, so it shows how quiet that they are. I do notice your front yard flowers and pollinator habitat, and it's actually been the subject, not your garden, but others, or collectively across the city, about maybe we need to update some standards, so I've been working on framing up some of that, and maybe in conversation with the city. So, I think it's wonderful that, that you've been involved in sustainability in the park and public arts, and in just connecting with the community. Could you, you know, if there were an issue like Wagler needed to be improved in some way, Wagler Park, or some other part of Ward II, residents have got, oh, just a to pull one out of thin air, speeding on their street or a parking problem on their street where sightlines aren't as safe as we want them to be. It's been talked about, but it kind of needs to be coordinated, focused, and then brought forward. Can you tell us a little bit about how your approach might be in coordinating with the community and being the voice of the neighborhoods?
Thank you. Yeah. One of the things I really love is research. Part of what I did in the schools was teach research projects. So like I had a whole class that I, I taught kids how to go through, like identifying problems and making, doing some sort of research, whether it's like a survey or a forum or, or talking to people, and then having a project at the end. So I did that with kids. But I think it's something that we could absolutely do, you know, on the city scale to some participatory research with the community. And so, you know, if it's, you know, a speeding thing, I know my street was one of them, that we got the letter about whether we wanted to have speed bumps or a speed table, something like that. And that was great, just to have a letter sent out and, and ask for some feedback on it. I, I didn't actually see too much of an issue with speeding, but that, you know, but, so I didn't, I did not add anything to that. But I would, I like the idea of first finding out like the, the basis of the problem, you know? What, what precedent is there before? Did we ever try these things before to solve the problem? And then moving forward, thinking of creative solutions as a team for, for the problems that we find. So if it's, you know, maybe not a speed bump problem, I don't know, maybe it's a law enforcement problem, maybe, you know? What is it exactly that, that is keeping, you know, that issue happening? So I guess what, you know, does that?
Yep. Sounds great. No, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So whether you are appointed or not to this position, do you see yourself seeking elected service in the future? There will also be, most likely, we will also have to be making an at-large appointment. So I guess there's two parts to that question. One, do you see yourself seeking elected office in the future, one way or the other? And do you feel, why do, why do you feel like the Ward Two position is, is a good fit for you?
So yes, I am interested in being, participating more in local government, however it looks. So whether it's running for a council seat, absolutely. I mean, that's, I mean, why I'm sitting here, council sounds awesome. But also, you know, there were a lot of different committees and things like that that sounded interesting, even on the, when we were submitting some information to council, I was like, oh, there's like the clean water one and the tree committee. Like all of those sound really interesting to me. So yeah, I would absolutely be excited about participating in, in all different ways. So, yeah.
Then do you want to tell us a little bit about why you think you're a good fit for this Ward Two position?
Thank you. I think I'm a good fit for this position because I, I have been here long enough to see that, you know, city council does make a big difference in just everyday lives. You know, I am able to have chickens or, you know, the front yard pollinator garden is something that, you know, I once actually even received a letter from the city about. And I called up Jason Shakner and talked to him about it. And I know some of the laws were changed in that, from that conversation. Like when I first got that letter, I was like, I realized from the ordinances that milkweed was illegal at the time. And that's one of the larval host plants for the monarchs who come through here. So that, I do know that that has changed since then, which was awesome to see. And so I know that the decisions that we make or that you all make are useful, you know, to the future of the city. And I would like to be part of that because, you know, I have a good background of working with children and families and working, you know, I wrote IEPs, which are the Individualized Education Plans for Kids with Special Needs. And I've worked, so I was working with federal laws and state laws and district policies to make, to make documents about what services the children would receive. So like I'm, I'm used to hearing different perspectives and working within the laws to, to make the best outcomes in a holistic sense for people. And, you know, I, I just absolutely love living in Lakewood. I love the, the values that we have here, that we, we embrace diversity here in Lakewood. I, I think it's amazing that, you know, there's so many different cultures represented and different languages spoken. And it's something that we don't just, you know, put aside. It's something that's part of our, our culture as a city. And I, I think that, you know, as a person who also is, is part of the LGBTQ community and things like that, I feel like this is a nice, safe place to live. And I would like to keep it that way. And I would like to work on making this an accessible, inclusive city from here on out.
Thank you. Excellent calls. All right. Councilmembers, any final questions? I just would like to make a comment. Councilwoman Marks.
I forgot to mention when I had the microphone before, I noticed that you participate in the Garden Walk in Lakewood, which is a volunteer program. It's a wonderful program. I, I'm so impressed with what all of you local gardeners do. And thank you for opening up your yard to the community. It's so wonderful to see. So I just wanted to acknowledge you for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, it's a lot of fun. It's been an awesome way to meet people in the community and talk about, you know, just our gardens, but also our houses and, and our community. Yeah, just the community. It's, it's wonderful. Yeah.
Then one final thing I forgot to ask is, is there, I know you've filled out the volunteer survey. Is there anything else that you feel like we should know or that could come out or that would, you know, call your appointment into question or make constituents concerned?
I actually did have a question. If I work on a campaign, like for example, like a Democratic campaign that's coming up, would that be a conflict of interest with which?
Okay.
No, okay. I was wondering.
Okay.
If it were, a lot of us would be in trouble. So.
Right. Okay. Just making sure. Yeah, no, that's not a problem at all.
Okay.
But thank you for that question. Yeah.
Okay.
Well, thank you so much again. Thank you for applying. It does, like a lot of my colleagues said, it takes a lot of courage to both apply and to sit up here and, you know, be on record and put yourself out there like this. So we really do appreciate it. And we will be in, in touch with the decision regardless. You're welcome to stay for the remainder of the interviews tonight. You also, if you have places to go and people to see, you can also do that as well.
Thank you so much. And thank you for the opportunity to speak in person. This is amazing.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just clarify for the record that Councilwoman Baker, I didn't ask Ms. Welch to make the excellent point about electrifying.
We're making progress, Tom.
Zoo go-karts. I've observed the same thing myself as a zoo.
Metro Park stuff here. Lock off line.
Okay.
Hey, Brian. And whenever you're ready, if you want to come up and get settled, you can either sit or stand, whatever's more comfortable for you. And then the button there, I don't know if it's left on or not. It should be glowing red if it's, the mic's on.
It's on.
Okay. Sounds good.
You've got a minute if you want to go out in the hall and scream or anything.
I'm good if you're good.
All right. So we'll go ahead. Our next interview is Brian Higgins. So welcome, Brian. And thank you also for applying. You heard some of what I just said, but just to go over it again, typically council members work around 20 hours a week, sometimes more, sometimes less on council business, plus all other community engagement, going out and around in the community, political action, et cetera, et cetera. So we typically are here Monday nights. We're always first and third Monday unless it falls after a holiday like tonight. So that usually starts as early as 5:30 and goes until business is done, which sometimes during budget season can be particularly late. We, there may be other special meetings on other days of the week. Those, we try to schedule around council members' schedules. And what am I leaving out? I think, well, you heard everything I said to her, but given all those under, that sort of a schedule, does that, is that something that you would be able to accommodate?
I would be.
Okay. Great. And then also this appointment, as you know, is a little bit atypical because of the length of time left on the appointment. The person appointed to it would be appointed through the end of 2025. And then if wanted to keep that seat, would have to run for a two-year term if, for the remainder of that, that period. And then would run again for a four-year term after that if they wanted to keep the seat. So just making sure you're aware of that, understanding. Okay. And then I'll go into my first question. If you can tell us a little bit about some of the ways that you've been engaging in the community, ways that you've helped build community, worked in community service and around in Lakewood?
So let's start with, I'm more of countywide in some of my engagement. I have helped feed the underprivileged for 14 out of the last 16 years, taking two years off for COVID, at St. Malachi Parish. Here in Lakewood, I'm obviously engaging council meetings. I volunteer coached multiple sports through the Recreation Department, through the YMCA, through CYO, something that I got started with the Lakewood Recreation Department, our football team, our 5-6 football team. The day after homecoming for the high school team, we would have a mini homecoming game at Garfield most years. And I would ask parents and visitors that were coming to either give $5 or bring a couple cans foods, a can of foods, which we would then donate back to the Christian Food Bank on Madison to help out our community that's less needy. I, what else? I'm active in trying to bring knowledge to Lakewood, the Lakewood community on issues that are important to them. I gathered signatures for issue one last year. I, I'm really active in trying to get the minimum wage in the state of Ohio, in our community, not only in our community, but throughout Cogga County. And this year I gathered around 500 signatures in Lakewood and gerrymandering, which we got put on the ballot coming up in November.
Great. Thank you. And then the other question, how long have you lived in Lakewood? And how long in Ward Two?
About 17 years. All, all the time was in Ward Two.
Councilwoman Rader.
Thank you, Brian Higgins, for being here. Really appreciate you making the time for us. And like I said earlier, yeah, it takes, takes guts to put your name out there and, and sit here. So I really do, I do appreciate that. I know it takes energy. And you had a great cover letter, by the way, too. It's one of the things that stood out. I think it's a very, very well-written cover letter. So yeah, same question basically as I asked before to our, to Allison. Councilmembers, it's a service sort of oriented role, certainly. You spend a lot of time in constituent services, but it's also a leadership type position, creating rules, making sure Lakewood is headed the direction that, that we feel the city is calling for and that all of our value sets sort of reflect. So whether it be formal or informal, what types of leadership roles have you held? And how have they sort of, how will they inform you as a council member? How, how will that leadership sort of manifest itself?
I'm an active member of SEIU International. And here locally, I'm a member at the local level of SEIU 1199, which covers West Virginia, Kentucky, and Ohio. I sit as an executive board member and I chair, or I don't chair, excuse me. I also am on the Political Screening Committee, which helps our, which influences, you know, state, local, and national politics. What we stand for at SEIU is just to bring everyone up. We're all equal. We want everyone to have fair wages, a safe place to live, be treated equally, no discrimination. So that's how I show my leader. I'm also active in grievances. I'm on the Grievance Committee, Arbitration Committee, where I have to go in front of sort of a board like this and talk and try to advocate for my member, our members, that we're done unwrongly, in our opinion, unjust.
Sort of the same follow-up as well. How, as, as a council member, how would you take those leadership skills and how do you envision using them in this role?
So when you're, when you're the head, not the head, but when, when you're on a committee, you have to listen to everybody. And not everybody's always going to get along. You have to actively listen. You have to keep people on the, you hear everyone and you have to keep them going in the same direction. Everyone, opinion does matter. And you have to hear and you have to understand what they're worried about or what, what their issues are. So I think that would help in council. My constituents, I would listen. I'm an active listener. That's what I have to do daily. And not only do you have to act, listen, you have to come up with a plan to address their concerns. It's called Start With Heart. You hear, you empathize, actively listen, you respond, and you thank them for telling you your problem so that we can work together to try to, try to fix the issue you're having. I think that would go well over in Ward Two. Started already.
Very good. Thank you, Brian.
Yeah.
Councilman Baker?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Higgins, for coming. I like your shirt.
Thank you.
Good one. So similar question to Ms. Welch. You know, I mean, being a ward accounts person is a little bit different than being at large. You're kind of the Amos Budman, to use a union term, for, for constituents in your ward. And you're also a trustee for the rest of the city to make sure that's going in the right direction. So in the 15 months that you would have in this term if appointed, what do you see as the biggest issues facing Ward Two and then that council can help on? And what do you think are the biggest issues facing the city that council can help on? Could be the same, could be different.
The issues in Ward Two that, that my neighbors have told me, we're worried about our infrastructure. For the first time last year, our sewer was backed up in our basements. It looks like south of Hilliard and just completely ruined a lot of people's basements. So we're worried about, we're worried about infrastructure. We're also worried about some, some of the vacant storefronts on Madison Avenue. And I think citywide, we're worried about the redevelopment of the hospital site, how that's going to affect, affect us in Ward Two, multiple things, our property taxes, our quality of life, our green space. That's what we're worried about.
Now, so those are the issues. How do you think that council can bring them to a successful resolution that satisfies the most amount of people or that gets the best deal for the city in, in kind of those instances? Because I think promunification is step one and then solution creation is the next step.
I think we, as council, can do a better job communicating what, what we're doing to fix the problems. That we're doing an intercept tunnel project, I believe it's down there on Orchard Park in Detroit. Is there one going in there? Not for sure. But I, I didn't know where the interceptors were. And I'm pretty active. So it would have been, if we would have had more communication, I don't know, an email, a mailer, saying, hey, we, we understand your basement's all flooded. And this is the first time ever in 20 years that that's happened. But this is what we're doing to address that. That's part of a long-term solution with our sewer, our sewer project. As far as the hospital, just redevelopment site, just constant communication, saying what's going on. Yeah, we had someone else pull out again, but we're confident we're still going to go forward with this plan. And so on. I think it's communication. That's how it would help.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Marks.
Thank you, Brian. Thanks for coming to apply for this position. In reference, this kind of is piggybacks again on, on Councilwoman Baker's question. In your cover letter, you said that, that Ward Two has unique challenges and opportunities. Could you tell me what you see those unique challenges to be for Ward Two?
Well, the unique challenges are the, the empty storefronts on Madison. If, with support from the city, we could get some, some business in their small businesses that would, that would actually stay. Another Ward Two issue, we're, we're trending a little bit younger. Our, our children don't have much in recreation. Wagner Park was remodeled, but other than that, we don't have anything. And I'm a big advocate of keeping youth engaged with, with recreation. If it wasn't for that, for Clark Rec, for me and Estherbrook, I don't know how I would have turned up, or turned out 30 years ago. So that's a challenge, you know, keeping our youth involved, getting those storefronts, storefronts up and running. The sewer project is a unique challenge.
Thank you. Thanks. Councilwoman Strebit.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Higgins, for your service with the union. I appreciate that. I'm a union daughter myself. My father was a teamster for many that. I'm a union daughter myself. My father was a Teamster for many, many, many years, and was a steward with the union. And I can remember him coming in after long, long nights of conversations and arguments and agreements and arguments and agreements. And I, I would be interested to hear, because of course I was, I was young at the time, and I didn't have the opportunity to ask him. But once you've heard everyone, as you're saying, right, you listen to everybody, how do you communicate with those that disagree with the decision?
Constant communication, just constant communication. Tell them what we hear. I hear your problem. I understand your problem. But the consensus is to move this way. But that does not mean that you don't have a voice. If, if we're not exactly fixing the problem how you see fit, tell us how, tell me how we can fix it to where you would get on board with what, what the consensus was.
Even if it's against what the, what the original decision was?
So if it's against, so you're upset about a decision the rest of the team made?
Yeah.
Yeah, we just have to, I would, I would communicate with you, ask you, what is something in our decision that you could like or you do like? And let's work on from there. And the next time up, I assure you, we'll get to, we'll get to your problem and give you a piece to make you feel like you're a part of the team. All stick together regardless of, if you get upset over one decision, you're not really part of a team. We have to stick together. Not everyone's going to agree with everything 100% of the time. That's, that's not life. Just communication. You have to let people know that their opinion matters, their voice matters. And you, you do that by listening to people, by taking the time to actively listen to them. And the way you respond, you respond, it helps. Communication is key.
Very good.
Yep. Councilman Ball.
Thank you. Hi, Mr. Higgins. Good to see you. I'll, I'll ask a variation of the same question I asked before. If there's a neighborhood issue, community issue, or maybe it's just, it's not particular to a neighborhood, it's just a new need not yet reflected in the city policies or initiatives that are getting worked on, can you give us examples of how you might go about getting that coordinated, organized, and brought forward into the city government, knowing that there's usually not a magic wand, and it's pretty uncommon that on the first go-around, you get everything that you're hoping for? And before the answer, thank you also for the coordinating work with the, the gerrymandering petition signatures. That's very essential.
So we're, we're talking about a, something that might be coming down the line, that the, that the city wants to implement toward Two, or about that?
Well, just any new thing, it's really a work style question I'm trying to get at. Like how, how would you go about it?
My style of leadership is communication. I constantly communicate. Before I got up here, I had three calls communicating to people that had issues. So you, you have to communicate. I literally will, and I have. I've already knocked on 6,000 doors citywide, letting people know who I am and what, right? So you just, I would go knock on doors. I would physically go knock on doors. That's, that's who I am. I would go knock on your door and say, this is an issue coming up. Do you have an opinion? Is there something you would like to see done with this issue? Put it down on a piece of paper, you get all that, you'd analyze the data, and you would come up to a conclusion. That's how I would, that's how I would handle that. Constant communication.
Okay, thank you. And certainly, that hard work is, is always something to be admired and applauded. And I also take the feedback. I agree that City Hall and City Council, we could always improve our communication, even at our customer service.
I'm not saying that to criticize. That's, that's, that's my leadership style, constant, constant communication. I found that at out best. You know, I don't know many of you. Last year around this time, I was in a fight with the Cleveland Clinic, the largest employer in the state of Ohio, the economic engine of Caga County. I took hundreds of members against the Cleveland Clinic. When they told me in February, basically to piss off, excuse my French, we're not negotiating with you. It took seven months. But with constant communication with my members at Lutheran Hospital, on Labor Day of 2023, we were going to go on strike against the all-powerful Cleveland Clinic. And guess what happened? The clinic backed down. They, they, they receded. That wouldn't have happened without communication. There was people there every day saying, I can't strike, I can't do this. You just stay on, you stay on people, you communicate. You let them know what the greater good is for the whole, what, how is it going to benefit the whole. It might not benefit you today, but it benefits us, all of us as a whole. And that's going to be the same thing in city government. 50,000 people live here. I, no, no one's ever going to agree with everything you do, but if we're making decisions and communicating those decisions, that's going to make the city of Lakewood better for the benefit of the whole, that's a good day in my book.
Okay, thanks very much.
Okay, so we will likely, as you know, will likely have an at-large appointment coming up as well as this Ward Two appointment. Whether you are selected or not, for this appointment, do you expect that you would like to begin elected service in one of those? And if so, why do you think the Ward Two position is a good fit for you?
So if appointed or not, I will apply again in November, and I am definitely running for election next year, 100%. Why do I think the Ward Two position would be the best position for me? Because I live in Ward Two for 17 years. My, my, my children have went to Hayes School and Harding School. I, I know most of my neighbors of my sex, right? So I believe I would do the best in Ward Two. But, yeah, I'm going to run no matter, no matter what.
And are there other, whether you're appointed or not, are there other boards and commissions that you're interested in serving on in another capacity?
I would have to take a look at, at that and see if they line up with schedules. I'm not for sure what the schedules are. I don't want to say yes, and then not be able to do that.
Thank you. I was trying to remember what else I asked. Was, is there anything else that we should be aware of that might come to light if we're appointed that would come out that we, that might reflect poorly?
No, I don't, I don't think, I don't think so.
Right. Councilmembers, any further questions? All right. Is there anything else you'd like to tell us about why you feel like you are a great fit for this position?
Sure. I, I feel with my work with the union, with SEIU, I have developed communication skills and a way to work with the other, with the other side. And I don't mean to say my constituents are the other side, but I've learned to work with a way, just to work with people, that even if, if they're yelling at you and they're screaming at you, most of the time, they're not yelling or screaming at you, they're screaming through you. That's something big I've learned. They're screaming through you. They're not mad at you, they're mad at their situation. So I think I'm uniquely qualified for that, because people normally don't contact council, I'm sure, you know, council unless they're unhappy about a situation. And some of those times, you could be uninformed in that situation. So I'm already prepared for that. Bring it, bring it to me, and I'll let you yell at me, and then when you calm down, we'll talk it through and we'll communicate why that issue is and why the city is going this way.
Well, I'll echo my colleague's sentiments for, thank you for putting your name in. It does take courage to do that, as well as to sit up here and answer these questions, and also appreciate your work with SEIU. You know, I, I was a member for many years at the library, and a lot of my friends just went through a pretty challenging negotiation there. So, so that's really important work, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Well, like I said before, you're welcome to stick around, as you know, or you got to go. That's fine, too. So colleagues, why don't we take a quick little break then? And we'll come back in, in just a few minutes. But we're a little ahead of schedule miraculously. All right. We're five minutes ahead of schedule miraculously, so let's keep it that way. All right, we got everybody. All right. So, welcome, Ms. Steiner. And again, like we've told everyone, thank you so much for your interest and for applying. It takes a lot of courage to put yourself out there and sit up here with us. So a couple of basic things to make it easier. So we, council members typically work around 20 hours a week. The council work of getting legislation ready, getting ready for meetings, being at meetings, et cetera, et cetera, that doesn't take into account going to community events, political activities, campaigning, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And we work, are here the first and third Mondays unless it falls on a holiday like today. Then we're on Tuesdays. The other Mondays, we have committee meetings, as you know. So typically on Mondays, we would be here as early as 5:30 and until business is done, which sometimes during budget season can be into the wee hours of the morning. So given all of that, does that schedule something that you can accommodate?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, great, thanks. Okay, so first thing, can you tell me a little bit about your, I mean, we've, we've obviously been familiar with some of your work, and we've seen your resume and cover letter. Can you tell me a little bit about your work in the community, in civic engagement, in public service?
Yeah, absolutely. So the past four years, I have spent in direct service to the city of Lakewood through my work with Madison Court Community Coalition, being one of the founding members of that. I am currently the treasurer for that organization. And I also am co-chair of the Lakewood Anti-Racism Task Force, and I've been a part of that since its inception in 2020. And I was also part of the community health needs assessment on the steering committee. And that was around 2021. Let me look at my resume, I'm sorry. That was 2021 to around 2023. And then I've also was on the Charter Review Commission that started in January, and we're going to be finishing up that work here in the coming weeks. And I'm currently on the elementary task, facilities task force as well. So all of those, I've been completely submerged in the community. And I will say, my most proudest work is that of Madison Court Community Coalition and what we've and what we've been able to do, working in partnership with Friends of Madison Park and the Lakewood Outdoor Basketball Committee, and bringing forth a master plan for Madison Park. All of that started in direct sort of alternative vision of what we want at Lakewood to look like. And so to see that be fully realized is, that's probably my most proudest work here in the city.
Awesome. Thank you. And can you tell us how long you've lived in Lakewood and how long in Ward Two?
What's the second question?
How long you've lived in Ward Two?
Oh, okay. All 10 years. So a little over 10 years, so since 2013. I will say I am a somewhat lifer. If we're defining lifer, ask someone who was raised here and stayed here and remains here. So I was raised here in Lakewood, but I grew up in Ward Four. So I'm very familiar, obviously, with Madison Park and that part of Lakewood, but I've been living in Ward Two since 2013.
Hey, colleagues. Councilman Reader.
Just keep the tradition going here. Angelina, thank you so much for being here. And yes, certainly, your work precedes you. I've been very involved with Lakewood Outdoor Basketball Committee and Madison Court through them. So I certainly know your work through that, and thank you for all you've done for Lakewood. And, you know, same question as the others. We are a community service body, but we're also a leadership body, you know, choosing the direction for the city, working with the administration certainly on that. So give me a sense about some of your leadership roles you've held, either formally or informally, that best match this position that you'd be taking on council? And also how that might translate to being in this position? What, those leadership skills, how will they manifest in this Ward Two position? How will you use those skills? So take it away.
Yeah, absolutely. So my work with Madison Court Community Coalition, we don't necessarily have a hierarchy, even though we know that eventually, yes, we have to do that for infrastructure. But we don't necessarily have a hierarchy. We don't have anyone who's sort of in charge or a president or anything like that. But I loosely am sort of the one that pulls everyone together. My style of leadership is that of inclusive leadership. So I seek to ensure that everyone has a place at the table, that everybody's voice is included. I am real big on nonverbal communication. As someone that is an introvert, I always keep my eye out for those that are, you know, sitting back that may have something to say but may not feel comfortable saying it. So making sure that that space is safe for them to say what it is that they want to say. So for me, it's very important that inclusive leadership and making sure that everybody has that space, everybody has that voice, and everybody is able to speak. So that is what I would bring to council. And what does it mean to be an inclusive leader? It means that you're, first and foremost, you listen. You know, sometimes I, in my earlier life in college, and I once had a supervisor that tells me, you know, you always, you always have, you know, you just always know what to say. And it's not that I always know what to say, it's just that I learned how to listen. And it's when we listen, that's when sometimes we get the ideas or we get the aha moments. So I think that is the number one rule of being an inclusive leader, is that you have to listen. And you have to listen with all of your senses, and that can be really hard sometimes. So I think, you know, as an introvert, I've had to really learn how to adapt because a lot of times, meetings and how they're organized are not, are not mindful of various learning styles and various ways that people absorb information. So I try really, really hard that everybody is, that everybody feels that they have that place in that meeting. And that's what I would bring to council.
More specifically, as a, and thank you, good answer, as a council member, how would you manifest those skills? How would you apply those in a very direct way?
So it would be in the manner, so if, as an example, if, you know, I'm running a committee meeting, it would be making sure that, you know, everyone, you know, has that time, that everyone has that space to voice their concerns. You know, making sure that residents feel as though they have a place to come, making sure that they know that you're, the committee is where you really want to come forward and speak your concerns and have those out there. So it would also be sort of teaching and educating people how to engage with council members.
Good. Thank you.
Councilman Baker.
Thank you, Ms. Steiner. And I know as a kid growing up in Lakewood, having access to basketball courts was super important to me. And pre-2002, when I graduated, there were many more in the community. And it was a great outlet for something for 14 to 15, 16, 17, 18-year-olds to do, which is a gap we have in our kind of recreation for kids. So I appreciate all the work you do and making sure that we actively accommodate and push that out there in our community. And thank you for putting yourself out there for this position. One thing in this kind of similar question I've asked others is, you know, being a council person for a ward is different than at large, and you kind of have to be an ombudsman for the folks in your ward and kind of focus on their unique issues. But then also, you're kind of a trustee for the whole city to make sure the whole city's doing well. So in the 15 months that are left on this term, what do you see as the thing that council can most help address the biggest concern in Ward Two and then in the city in general? And are they the same? Are they slightly different? And so if you could just, that I'd really appreciate it.
Yeah, I'm just going to write that down real quick. So you want to know specifically for Ward Two and then the city?
Yeah, and kind of, in issues and how you see, how you would think you'd be able to in the next 15 months, 15 months, gain some sort of traction towards addressing those issues?
Yeah. So I will say that there's a number of issues that we could certainly cite, so it's hard to pinpoint one. And I think the biggest one is probably housing affordability. The reality of whether or not that could be, anything could, gains could be made in those 15 months, I'm not sure. But I certainly think that more and deeper conversations need to happen, ideas need to be put forth, what we can do. Advocacy needs to happen. We probably need to work closely with our state legislators. And we probably need to work with our congressional leadership as well, because it isn't just an issue that is affecting Lakewood residents. It's a statewide issue. It's a nationwide issue, and it really is a global issue. And I think my manner of approaching issues with Ward Two is sort of, you know, think globally, act locally. So, you know, hyper focusing what's really specific to Ward Two, but then how does that ultimately, you know, affect Lakewood? So I definitely think housing affordability, you know, especially in Ward Two, and I'm a renter myself. So that is something that, you know, is of concerns. I've been a renter for, you know, the past 10 years. And my rent's been stable. I've been blessed to have that. But I see, you know, friends that just are close to being priced out of Lakewood. And it's ultimately affecting somewhat underneath what's going on at our schools. And in Ward Two, we have, you know, two amazing schools. You know, we have Hayes and we have Harding. And so I think, you know, all of that sort of intersects those issues, housing affordability, and, you know, making sure that residents can still afford to live here. I think, so that's, you know, Ward Two and sort of citywide.
Great. And when you were in Ypsilanti, Eastern Michigan, you did not like the University of Michigan, right?
No.
Thank you.
No. I did not sell out. I did not sell out.
Councilwoman Marks?
Hi, Angelina. Thanks for coming. Thanks for applying for this position.
You're welcome.
So I'll ask you the same question, and I think you've answered it a little bit, but if you could be a little more specific, what you feel are the most significant problems that Ward Two faces? And I know you spoke about housing affordability, but do you have any thoughts about how that could be managed?
So that's the million-dollar question, because I think if anybody had any ideas on how that could be managed, it would already be out there. So I think what Jason started with the ADUs is a start. I think we need to look at, you know, that and really track that data and making sure that the intent of that program is that it's affecting, that we're getting the outcomes of that initial intent of that program. And I also think we, you know, some of what you have talked about in Ben Championing is aging in place. So how do we help seniors age in place and stay in their homes? So I think we look at, you know, the ADUs, we look at the aging in place. I think we need to look and see what other communities have done as far as housing. I know we are limited due to the state rules and regulations. We can't do rental caps. So, you know, obviously, that's off the table unless we can change that legislation, which I'm not sure that we'd be able to do that anytime soon. Cough, cough. But, you know, I, so, you know, that's off the table for now. So I think we have to look outside of Lakewood and see what other communities are doing. You know, look at similar communities and just see how they're tackling it, and pick up the phone and reach out to our colleagues and say, "How are you doing this? What are you doing? Are you doing anything?" And, you know, that's where I think it can happen. But again, I don't have the answer, but I know how to research. I know how to look things up. I know how, I can put together some abstracts, some white papers, and, you know, if you were asked me, you know, "Can you put together a white paper and present something in six months?", I would say, "Yes, I will present something to you in six months." Thank you.
That you provide to the city overall.
Yeah.
You're very active, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Shribid.
Thank you, President Kupel, and thank you, Ms. Steiner, for being here today and applying for this position and echoing my colleagues here, thanking you for all of your community service that you've done. It's very impressive. And our city is, thank you, our city is richer for the work that you've done. Can you tell me, because of course we know that things don't always go as smoothly as we'd like them to, can you tell me about any, well, not specifics, about any disagreements necessarily, but if you could tell me about how you've handled disagreements and how you've worked through that process?
Yeah, absolutely. I would say some of my best lessons I've learned that have prepared me for professional public service life I experienced when I was in college and then just coming out of college and working as AmeriCorps Vista and then my work at Eastern Michigan University. And I was, you may be shocked to know, I was very gung ho and wanted things to go a certain way. And, you know, I had to be taught or told, you know, that we behind the scenes, we have to have a united front. And I can't remember what the particular decision was, but there was a decision that was being made, and I strongly disagreed with it. And the question that was asked is, "Can you publicly support this?" And I sort of bit my tongue. I'm like, "Yes, I can publicly support it, but I don't like it." So, you know, that is sort of, that's, you know, how things go sometimes, is that we all aren't, you know, in terms of speaking about council decisions, right? We all aren't going to agree, but we have to find that common ground. And we can hold our nose and hold our line and be, you know, in our ways and dead set. But at the end of the day, we have to have and show unity at the same time and understand that what we say and how we say it outside, you know, to the public, does affect all of us at the end of the day. So we do have to be careful with what we say, how we say it. Words matter, and they do mean something. And so the worst thing that you want to do is sort of say something that throws, you know, colleagues, you know, under the proverbial bus or, you know, and really cuts into the good work that you're doing, you know, all over one little slighted issue. So I think that that's something that I keep in my mind, and we always can't always get our way. But again, that goes to show that, you know, it's about being inclusive and inclusive leadership. And that's something that I've had to learn throughout my years of work, is, you know, that somebody might have the best idea, but somebody might have a better idea. And somebody might have a really good idea over here. And sometimes the best idea is bringing all the pieces together. And now you've got, everybody has invested interest in that decision, because a little bit of what they wanted is in that. So I think that's, for me, that's sort of is how I lead and how I work through things.
Thank you.
Did that answer your question?
100%.
Okay.
Councilwoman Bullock.
Thank you. Thanks, Madam Chair. Ms. Steiner, good to see you, and thanks for being here. Thanks for applying and your interest in continued public service. My question's a workshop question. I think we know that your community work is extensive, and you know how to do that. How about on the inside, when now you've got all the people together and the need is identified, and it's time to try to get that implemented into all the legalese and the budget stuff?
Right. Yeah.
And the sprocket size has to be a certain thing, otherwise it's not going to apply, and therefore we can't do it because of the sprockets. And there's always all these reasons, right? And as you think you did a nice job in the previous answer to Councilwoman Shribid, then it's not automatic that council members agree, and really, it's not about us. We're trying to do our level best to represent the public, the members of the public that we're talking to.
Right.
As, so there's this, sometimes it's a lot, and it can be slow-moving, and sometimes it can be a little bit exasperating. So given all that, that layer cake between technical and people wrangling and, you know, policy, can you give us some sense of how you might put into play one of these important transformative issues like housing affordability you might work on?
Yeah, so I think my work style is ownership and delegation. And so, you know, I consider myself a servant leader, which means I'm not just delegating. I'm not just telling people what to do. I'm actually doing stuff. And so that would, that would be my work style, that, you know, if I'm charged with the committee and I'm working with three or four other people, and maybe there's community members involved, we're all coming together. Okay, who would like to do what? Who has the capacity to do what? I think a lot of times, you know, people want to be engaged and they want to be involved, but they're just limited on time. So I'm always trying to be mindful of that. And so, you know, and I think if you, it starts from the top. It starts with, you know, solid leadership that people want to get behind and support. And so from there, you sort of build your team. You build your work team, who's going to do what. You delegate. You have a timeline. You have tasks, and you do check-ins, you know. Obviously, some of that would be directed through, you know, those check-ins would happen, obviously, at committee meetings. You know, that would be when the check-ins happen, you know, keeping with public records and all of that stuff. So keep being mindful of all of that, but that's essentially how I would, how I would work with council. I don't think it would differ as much from how I normally work and operate in the community stuff and probably a lot of what I would bring, some of sort of my skill sets from my professional life, because a lot of it is deadline-driven. It is timeline-driven. It is task-oriented. It is very much, you need to do this, you need to do this. You know, I deal with, you know, federal agency, federal and state agencies on a daily basis. So I understand sort of all of that and how that works and how that operates. So I'll bring that level of knowledge and sort of, here's how we have to work within all that, mold it together, and have a process that works and gets stuff done.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, so as you know, we will likely also have an at-large position that we'll need to appoint in the near future. And given that knowledge, as well as your experience working with council, do you think at this point, whether or not you're appointed, that you would seek elected office? Is the first part of the question. And secondly, if, so why do you think you are, why do you think the Ward Two specific seat is the correct fit for you?
Yeah. So yes, I would seek out public elected office, you know, no matter what the outcome of this process is. That's not going to stop me from being engaged. And that's sort of not, that's not my end. So yes, I would definitely seek out office and would apply. So yes, I would definitely seek out office and would apply potentially for the at-large seat as well. So as far as the Ward II seat, you know, I live in Ward II, that's, that's where I live. So it makes sense to put myself out there and represent my ward and I've been living there. But it also gives me an opportunity to focus a little bit of a smaller footprint and maybe, you know, grow my skills even more as, you know, a specific ward council person.
Then is there anything else that we should know, anything that might come to light that would be ill becoming of a council person, anything that we should be aware of?
No.
All right. Anything else you'd like to tell us about why you're the best selection for this seat?
Well, I prepared an opening statement, so maybe I'll use it as my closing. So I am what some would say is a lifer, but not a true lifer. Again, as you heard earlier, if we define lifer as someone that was raised here and remains here. I grew up here in Lakewood, left Lakewood to attend college out of state, not at the school up north, and I remained there after receiving my bachelor's degree. I consider myself a public servant and servant leader, having spent the majority of my professional career in public service and for public benefit, exemplifying servant leadership in both decision-making and leading through my approach of building cohesion and unity, consensus, empowering others and empathy and compassion. What has gotten me to this point, where I'm sitting today, is and has been my lifelong commitment made to public service that has directly engaged me the past four years, as I've mentioned before, through my work in Madison Court Community Coalition, the Community Health Needs Assessment, the Anti-Racism Task Force, the Charter Review Commission, and now the Elementary Planning Task Force. I know that there are some outstanding candidates interviewing for this Ward II seat. However, I am confident that my skills, knowledge and abilities will shine and rise to the top. Thank you for this time today.
Thank you. All right, colleagues, any further questions? Oh, Councilwoman Bullock.
Not, not for Ms. Steiner, just in general for the, before we wrap up.
All right, so Ms. Steiner, your excuse, thank you again for coming in. And then Councilwoman Bullock.
Yeah, just one question for kind of everybody and for ourselves. So there's been a standard question about are we running for off or do applicants intend to run for office? To clarify, that's not a requirement, is it? So I, I don't think it's, I know that has become a traditional question that, that has gotten asked of city council applicants in the last, I don't know how many times, but I think that's just to gather some context for whatever that is worth, right? But we're not saying we wouldn't consider an applicant if for whatever reason in their lives it doesn't fit for them to not run at the next, we might, we're just asking the question to gather facts, right? But not making that a requirement.
Yeah, I mean, so I'll speak for myself as one of six council members up here currently, but for me, there's two parts of why I ask that question. One is actually in the context of knowing that we will likely have another appointment of why this specific appointment would be the best fit or not, as well as understanding whether someone intends to run again, or run for the seat if not appointed, just kind of helps get some context about their level of commitment to that. But that doesn't necessarily mean there's a right or wrong answer to that question. It's just trying to understand where someone is. And none of us have a looking glass, right? So someone might have the intent to run and then life happens and that doesn't happen. So, you know, I think every time we've had an appointment, most of the candidates say yes, they intend to run and most of them don't. And, you know, people get sick, people get married, life happens, they have kids, you know, so we, we never know what, why anyone does or does not, but I think it's just helpful to have that understanding. And on that note about moving forward, so we will have a second set of interviews coming up next Monday, September 9th, starting at 6 o'clock. We have four more candidates to interview. After that, that same night, we will meet after we conclude interviews to discuss as a body and then we'll come out and take a vote, most likely on what name to insert in the resolution and then most likely refer that resolution back favorably to full council for actual adoption on the 16th. So just a little, keeping everyone apprised of process as we move forward. Okay, so we have no further business in community as a whole, so without objection, we're adjourned.
It's, however, how do you publicly comment? Because that's how you get to it. Yes, this is how you get to it. First and foremost. That's where you go. Okay. Yeah, it just says network error. If someone turns off, that's the visual button, right? It is very cool. There are a lot of people here today.
Colleagues, if you, colleagues, can you wake your way back up here, please? All right, we will call to order the council meeting for September 3rd. If you're able, please rise for the Pledge of Legion. Now pause for a moment of silence. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Baker.
Here.
Bullock.
Here.
Koppel.
Here.
Marx.
Here.
Rader.
Here.
Strubig.
Here.
Reading and disposal of the minutes of the regular meeting of council held July 15th, 2024.
Move to file without, move, move to approve without the necessity of a reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Reading and disposal of the minutes of the July 17th community conversation.
Move to approve without the necessity of a reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Reading and disposal of the minutes of the August 20th community conversation.
Move to approve without the necessity of a reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item one, election for Vice President of Council.
I will move to nominate Councilwoman Kyle Baker as Vice President.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded per Roberts Rules of Order. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Third time, any other nominations? All right, we have a motion and a second to nominate, to elect Kyle Baker as Vice President of Council. All those in favor?
Madam.
Oh, discussion, sorry, I'm sorry, discussion.
Yeah. Thanks, Madam Chair. I'm happy to support the motion. Mr. Baker had expressed his interest earlier and it was a hung jury, 12 angry men. We were locked till midnight and we couldn't choose to, between two excellent people, but in the fullness of time. I'm referring to the former Council Vice President, Jason Schachner, served for a while. We're having an opportunity for Kyle to serve tonight. I think he's proven his diligence, hard work, courtesy with the public, willingness to facilitate the work of the body and research policy, so he'll make a good, a very strong co-leader of city council. I look forward to working with Kyle in his new, about to be new role.
Thank you. And I apologize for starting to skip over discussion, not that it isn't warranted, we're just a little rusty. We haven't been back here for about a month. Any other discussion, comments from Kyle? Councilwoman Strubig.
Thank you. I'm in favor of this as well. I think Mr. Baker, Councilwoman Baker, has showed exceptional leadership and guidance in my first eight months for me specifically, and I greatly appreciate that. And I think he will serve this council well. Thank you.
Any other Councilwoman? Marx.
Yes, I too am in favor of Councilwoman Baker becoming Vice President of Council. In the time that I've worked with him, he has shown great empathy and compassion for community and great knowledge for how council works and the law in general. So I really admire him and have asked for his advice on several occasions. So glad to see that he will be co-chairing.
Councilwoman Rader.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, this is a no-brainer. Kyle's been just a fantastic friend and, and also having served as the Chair of our Planning Commission and, and serving faithfully in this role too as council, it just makes perfect sense. So yeah, happy to support this resolution.
Thank you. And I'll echo those sentiments and obviously since I made the motion, I'm very much in favor of having Councilwoman Baker with me in leadership and has already been leading a lot from his current role and I look forward to doing that in partnership. And I know, uh-oh, we'll do a lot of great work together, so.
Councilwoman Baker.
Yeah, all those words make me deeply uncomfortable, but what I will say is that although technically Councilwoman Schachner's shoes are smaller than mine, metaphorically they are big to fill, so I'll do my best and look forward to making this body accomplish as, as much as we can. I know we can do a lot of good for this community, so look forward to working with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, on the motion to elect Councilwoman Baker as Vice President, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that motion passes. Come on over. Yeah, okay, so we have a couple of guests here tonight, so without objection, I'm going to move. Thank you. Items 13 and 14 and 12. Yes, so we'll move items 12, 13, and 14 to the top. All right, hearing no objection, we will move to item 12, please.
Item 12, Resolution 2024-46, a resolution to affirm Lakewood's commitment to protecting the rights of all of its citizens by denouncing the discriminatory provisions of Senate Bill 104 as amended by House Bill 183, which undermines the safety and well-being of transgender and non-binary students.
Councilman Strebig.
Thank you. Dear President Keppel and colleagues, here we are again to tell the narcissistic Ohio lawmakers in Columbus to stop attacking our children. Stop fabricating fear. Stop creating issues for public gain at the expense of the children. Of all the things to worry about in a day, where do you go to use the toilet must be the very least of anyone's concern. The fear mongering, the lies, the disregard for diversity endangers the very lives they are supposed to protect. Colleagues, please join President Keppel, Councilperson Strebig, Councilperson Marx, and myself to stand against this chronic bullying and attacks on this very vulnerable group in our community. Insist that they better use their time and resources to protect, inspire, and lift children. Instead of barking hatred, show the children that there is a healthy future for them with love, dignity, and respect for everyone. They simply must do better. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm going to turn to Councilman Marx a moment, but first let me make a motion to adopt the resolution. Second, and then so we can move into discussion here. Sorry, I told you I'm a little rusty. It's been a month, all right. All right, Councilwoman Marx.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Councilwoman Strebig for always having a voice for the LGBTQ community and standing up for the rights of the trans individuals as well, and really bringing forward the importance of treating everybody fairly and equally regard of their, regardless of their gender or their sexual identity. You just are so stalwart in your convictions, and I just value you on council for all you bring to us and bring to Lakewood, and hopefully people want to live here because they know that we are a welcoming community. So thank you for your efforts. You know, I just admire you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other colleagues, Councilman Rader.
Oh, I just wanted to echo what Cindy Marx mentioned and thank Councilwoman Strebig. I know that it's Strebig. I know that it's not always easy advocating time and time again, while our state legislators will waste these resources on targeting LGBT community here in our own backyard, but it's so important that we do this and we use our voice collectively, and I'm just proud to be part of this group, and I hope that we can continue to fight back against some of this stuff as it moves forward. So just want to say thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other colleagues?
I'll just add some of my own sentiments here. This ill-considered bill really does not put the educational needs of students first, which should be a priority when we're talking about educational legislation, should be about the education of students, and I don't know how they expect children to learn if they can't go to the bathroom, right? And they can't go to the bathroom safely. And it also incorrectly assumes that all children are assigned one specific gender at birth. It also incorrectly assumes that all facilities are available in all schools, and it doesn't provide any funding to make more bathrooms for these schools. So it's an unfunded mandate that restricts our students from being safe and learning. I'm not quite sure why this would be a legislative priority for the State House, and I really appreciate being part of speaking out against it, particularly as many of you know, this is a very personal issue for me, and was particularly challenging for my child to be safe sometimes and continues to be when using the restroom, so I really appreciate you bringing this forward.
All right, on that note, we do have some public comment on this issue, so when I call your name, if you can come on up to the microphone up here, when you push the button, the light will turn green, so we can all hear you and people can hear you at home, and you'll have up to five minutes to speak. Please keep your remarks civil, directed to the chair, and that's it. All right, oh, and please state your address for that card. You can also use, if you work here in Lakewood, you could also just give that work location as well. All right, so the first person to sign in is Lindy Shukert.
Shukert. Thank you. Oh, great, come on up and thank you for being here. Just push the button there and it'll should turn green for you. Thank you. Yep, you're on. Good evening. My name is Lindy Shukert. I am a school counselor at Harding Middle School. The address, 16601 Madison, I think. Yeah, we'll go with that. Okay, so I am speaking tonight on behalf of one of our students, one of our Pride Club members that unfortunately got sick and couldn't be here, so she and her mom are at home, hopefully mending so they could be back, so she could be back at school tomorrow. So these are her words. Good evening. My name is Clara Gembaloni. I am a seventh grade student at Harding Middle School and a proud member of our school's Pride Club. I want to talk to you about something really important. Fairness and respect for all students, no matter who they are. Ohio's state bill 104 requires students to use the bathroom that matches the gender they were assigned at birth, even if that doesn't match who they really are. I believe this bill is wrong, and here's why. First, we need to remember that schools should be safe places for everyone. Transgender students, just like all of us, deserve to feel comfortable and accepted when they're at school. This bill, though, makes it harder for them. It forces transgender students to use bathrooms where they might feel out of place, uncomfortable, or even unsafe. Imagine how hard that would be. Forcing someone into a situation like that isn't fair, it's not respectful, and it's definitely not kind. Second, this bill doesn't solve any real problems. The truth is, there's no evidence that allowing transgender students to use the bathroom that matches their gender identity causes any harm to anyone. In fact, many schools across the country already let students use the bathroom that feels right for them, and there haven't been any major issues. So this bill is trying to fix a problem that doesn't even exist. Lastly, we should all care about standing up for each other's rights. Transgender students have the same rights as anyone else, and that includes the right to use the bathroom that matches who they truly are. When we take away their right to do that, we're sending the message that they're not valued or accepted for who they are. That's not the kind of message we want to send in our schools or our communities. Everyone deserves respect, and that includes transgender students. So when you hear about this bathroom bill, remember, it's not about safety or protecting anyone. It's about discrimination, plain and simple. We should be supporting our transgender classmates, not making their lives harder. Schools should be a place where everyone feels like they belong, and that's why I stand against this bill. Thank you for your time, and thank you Mayor George and Lakewood City Council members for your continued support for the LGBTQ plus people in our beautiful city. From Clara. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, wonderful, yes. All right, I don't see actually anyone else, everyone else seems to be signed in on a different topic. We didn't have anyone else signed in on this issue. All right, okay, all right.
Madam Chair. Or Madam President, rather. I don't want to cut a public debate, but I did want to make a comment before we vote.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, thanks. So I'll just add my support for the resolution, and I think a number of colleagues have really already said it more eloquently than me. It's very admirable that the students are here and that the school counselors here. Thank you for your words, and I'm glad to hear that the school system is taking a thoughtful approach and respecting the individuality of each student. It's good to hear. And maybe this line says it all in the resolution, where Lakewood upholds the values of equality and fairness for all individuals and strongly denounces, basically, it's not only discrimination, but it's, it's a political business model of making, making yourself better by using discrimination, and that's an extra level of despicable. So I'm happy to join the motion tonight.
Vice President Baker.
Yeah, thank you, Council President, and just thank my colleagues for bringing this forward. It's a solution in search of a problem, and it's, to piggyback on what Councilman Bullock said, it's pernicious particularly to go after the young people in our community. It's hard enough, and so I thank my colleagues for bringing this forward. Happy to support it.
Any further discussion? All right, so we're about to vote on this, after which we'll invite anyone who would like to come up and be presented, we'll be presenting this ceremonial resolution. If anyone would like to be part of that picture, you're welcome to join us. All right, so we have a motion and a second to pass Resolution 2024-46. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes. All right, so we will meet up front here for a quick.
Item 13, communication from Councilmembers Bullock and Marx regarding support for a replacement tax levy to support arts and culture.
Councilman Bullock?
Thank you, Madam President. Dear Mayor and Members of Council, please join us in supporting the following resolution, which would express support for an initiative on the 2024 general election ballot to continue arts funding in Cuyahoga County through Cuyahoga Arts and Culture. Prior to 2006, Greater Cleveland was one of the, one of only a few major metropolitan regions without sustainable public funding for the arts. That year, Cuyahoga County voters first supported a funding initiative for the sole purpose of funding arts programming and culture with a 53% vote of support. Funding was renewed in 2015 by a resounding majority of 75%. The funding source is a 1.5 cent cigarette tax on cigarettes and is the sole source of CAC revenues since the organization's policy is to refrain from fundraising that would compete with its grantees. In recent years, revenues gathered by the levy have dropped from 20 million in 2007 to just 10 million in 2023. Cuyahoga County Council voted unanimously in June of this year to put an initiative for a three and a half cent per cigarette tax on the November ballot to replace the one and a half percent cigarette tax, expected to raise 160 million over 10 years. Arts and cultural groups, large and small, receive critical funding support from CAC via these funds, whether regional organizations such as Playhouse Square and the Cleveland Orchestra, as well as Lakewood-based organizations, including the Beck Center, Lakewood Alive, and the Lakewood Young Filmmakers Academy, among others. In total, CAC distributed 246 million via more than 4,000 grants to 485 nonprofits at more than 2,000 locations, resulting in 533 million in economic activity and 8,637 jobs in 2023 alone, 2022 to 2023 alone, that should read. Lakewood, Lakewood's own Mike Gill, and I don't know if he's joined us tonight, has written, "The smallest organizations need it the most. All the region's arts infrastructure would take a big hit if the tax is not passed." And that infrastructure is a huge support system for individual artists. They depend on studios like Zygo Press, Morgan Conservatory, Praxis Fiber Workshops, and others to provide facilities and tools for their work. They are hired to teach at community arts centers like Bay Arts, Beck Center, Art House, Valley Arts Center, and more, and their exhibits engage the community at venues like Waterloo Arts, Carimoo House, and the Cleveland Print Room. The same applies to theaters, orchestras, and dance companies. We note that, among other respected leaders on CAC's board, are Lakewood Arts Festival Board of Directors Chair Carolyn Eisenhardt and Leonard DeCosmo, Executive Secretary of the North Shore AFL-CAO Federation of Labor. Lakewood has always supported the arts, and we are home to many artists, performing arts institutions, and creators who receive support from these funds, and supporting this funding initiative is supporting them, it's investing in ourselves, it's improving education and enrichening our quality of life. We respectfully request your support for this resolution tonight, sincerely. Move to receive and file that communication.
Second. Thank you. And Councilwoman Marx.
Thank you, and thank you, Councilman Bullock, for joining me in this important resolution. We all know the difference arts makes in a community. It really makes a difference in people's lives, and we can see that just evident in Lakewood with our, the important art programs that the city, the school provides to the students, that Beck Center provides, and we know that arts change communities. So I'm, I'm very much in support of this levy. I wish we had more money going, instead of just cigarettes, to sports games. I wish they could contribute money from that to the arts as well, but we're so grateful that the Beck Center is here in Lakewood and that provides such learning opportunities for the greater community. So I'm happy to support this levy in, in working with Mr. Bullock for this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
I'll just add, you know, as the daughter of a music teacher and a fine art major who taught ballet, this is generally my wheelhouse, so I really appreciate the support and know firsthand how important arts education is. Certainly, all of that performance experience is helpful running for office, you know. So anyway, so wonderful to have this before us. Thank you very much for championing it and for your work on that.
All right. Yes, we do. Do you want to do that on this or on the resolution? Okay, all right, so we do have some public comment, but we'll go ahead and, we have a motion and a second to receive and file this communication, so let's go ahead and, all those in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye, and that motion passes.
Item 14, Resolution 2024-51, a resolution to support of support for the replacement of the Cuyahoga County cigarette tax for arts and culture.
Move to adopt. Motion's been made and seconded, and we've had some discussion up here. Any further discussion? Deus. And then let's, we'll go ahead and call up, we do have some folks signed in for public comment. Again, when you come up, the microphone looks like it's actually already on, so you can just come up. You'll have up to five minutes to speak, address the chair. I don't think this is a concern, but please keep your remarks civil. All right, so we will first, up to speak is Cindy Einhaus from the Beck Center. All right, so we will first, up to speak is Cindy Einhaus from the Beck Center.
Hi, my name is Cindy Einhaus. I'm the President and CEO of Beck Center for the Arts, and I want to thank you for your great support of our institution. We are now entering the 91st year of creating arts experiences in Lakewood, Ohio, right on the west end of Lakewood. And I am convinced that we would not still be here except for the operating support that we have received from the cigarette tax since 2008. It came at a time when the economy was deeply depressed and people weren't giving much in philanthropy, and Beck Center was struggling greatly then financially. So I am absolutely convinced we would not still be here. Now, today, you know, the economy is better than it was in 2008, but there are a lot of, you know, philanthropy is down across the country, and a lot of foundations aren't give, aren't able to give operating support anymore because they have to invest so much of their philanthropy in social services. So this kind of operating support from Cuyahoga County through this cigarette tax is just so vital to Beck Center, and it's so vital to so many organizations around Cuyahoga County, but I'll just speak for Beck Center. So this is, you know, this, the importance of the arts in a community, it's, it's not, it's not about just entertainment. Okay, there's nothing wrong with entertainment. In fact, it makes a community a really great place to live, but it's also pretty essential just, you know, for quality of life and also for services that it provides. We do a lot of, of services for people with disabilities, and we're in every Lakewood public school with music therapy and art therapy. You know, there's so much more to the arts than what's on the surface. We, we provide a lot of jobs for this community. We provide, we have 70 teachers who are teaching music, or dance, or theater, or visual arts, or we're, you know, building up our, our gallery exhibitions. There's, there's a lot to the arts that is beyond just the entertainment value. So economic development, strong vibrant communities, it improves educational outcomes. This can be said of any, any arts organization, really. So I hope that you all will not only thoroughly celebrate this resolution, but also look for ways to advocate for the support of this levy once it's on the ballot, once there is a, is a levy number just assigned. This, we really need to vote yes for arts and culture for our community, for the continued flourish, flourishing of the arts in Lakewood and in Cuyahoga County. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. All right, and next we have Jeremy Johnson.
Good evening. My name is Jeremy Johnson. I'm the President of Assembly for the Arts and Assembly for Action. We are the organization that is helping to drive this, this ballot issue, this levy for arts and culture. And so often, I get in a room and I have to make the case for arts and culture, how important it is to our economy, how it is, how important it is to education, to our quality of life. I don't need to make that argument in this room, it appears, because we've seen from what we've heard, certainly from Cindy Einhaus and from those who have put this resolution forward, from the council, Lakewood is firmly behind what makes it a strong community. Arts and culture is really a huge part of that. Even prior to the testimony, to talk about the diversity of our community here in Lakewood and across Cuyahoga County, the diversity of our youth, the arts and culture is a part of that. It's integral to that, and it does drive the jobs. So I just want to say, as, as a part of the organization that is galvanizing all of Cuyahoga for this, thank you to the council, to, to Councilmember Marks, to Councilmember Bullock for being the, the cosponsors, and to all the council for putting this forward. We need this ballot issue to pass. 20 years ago, when this was created, prior to that, we did not have the support, general operating support, across the board for institutions like the Beck Center. If this does not pass, so much of that will be lost. We have to make sure this continues. There are many fights that we're fighting, that you all fight every day. This will support that, reinforce your work for jobs, for quality of life, for education, for all that makes this region a great region. So thank you for what you're doing. Let's make this issue pass, and I thank you for supporting this arts and culture levy. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I don't see anyone else signed in to speak on this. We didn't have anyone on the other sheet, I don't think. Okay, great. Well, thank you for those comments, and I'll just add, connecting the dots between our two ceremonial res, oh, oh, we do. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't realize that. Brian, come on up.
Good evening. Good evening, Members of Council. As Chairperson of the Lakewood Public Art Advisory Board, I have the privilege to have a firsthand view of how the city rolls out public art throughout the city. Myself and my colleagues are actively working every month to try and find ways to have more opportunities for arts and arts programming in our city, and which will lead to opportunities for artists. Lakewood is a city with a creative spirit. We're the home to so many artists, designers, makers, all different types. They're a part of our culture, a huge part of our culture, about who we are. Cuyahoga County Arts and Culture is a critical partner in ensuring that we keep that as such a huge part of our identity. So I wholeheartedly support this resolution. I want to thank Members of Council for making this a priority. I also want to take the moment to thank CAC, all the folks that work for them, for all the great impact they have here in Lakewood and around the region. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now, now I really don't see anyone on the, sorry about that, Brian. I saw CAC and I interpreted it as Citizens Advisory Commission, so I should have put that one together. All right, so thank you, everyone, for your comments, and I'll just add a personal note to talking about connecting the dots between our two ceremonial resolutions tonight is, again, the importance of arts to our young people in particular in finding something special to do in the out-of-school time hours, connecting with other like-minded youth. It's been really critical in, in my family, and so it's a, and in my own upbringing. So this is a really great thing to be supporting, and I'm happy to do so. All right, so we have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2024-51. Any further discussion? No? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that motion passes. Well, if, folks for supporting this, if you want to come meet us down front, we've got a ceremonial resolution for it.
Item two, Report from Committee of the Whole Held July 22, 2024.
Dear colleagues, the Committee of the Whole met July 22, 2024 to review two items. First, we considered Resolution 2024-50 and had the opportunity to speak with the new Director of Finance, Renee Mahoney. Councilmembers asked questions related to her professional background and initial goals for the Finance Department. After speaking with Ms. Mahoney, the Committee of the Whole voted unanimously to recommend Resolution 2024-50 to full council for adoption. Second, we heard from the Charter Review Commission about their final, final report that was submitted to council for consideration on July 1, 2024. Commission Chair Mark Dan provided a high-level overview of the report and the topic areas covered. Councilmembers then asked some clarifying questions about the next steps in the process now that the report has been submitted. We also went into a more detailed discussion on the topics of ward redistricting and the manner of amending legislation. The Committee of the Whole plans to invite the Charter Review Commission back over the next few weeks to continue the discussion and take a deep dive into each of the topic areas recommended for consideration in the final report. We thank the Charter Review Commission for their thoughtful approach and diligent work on the report, and we look forward to continuing this conversation.
Move to receive and file that report.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that motion passes.
Item three, Resolution 2024-50, a resolution to take effect immediately approving the appointment of Renee Mahoney to the position of Director of Finance upon his or her taking the oath of office.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? This has been a long time coming, but we're very glad to officially about to be having you on board. So welcome again, Mrs. Mahoney. All right, Director Mahoney. All right, motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item four. Item four, Oath of Office of Renee Mahoney.
Aye, Renee Mahoney.
Aye, Renee Mahoney.
Recognizing my duty.
Recognizing my duty.
To the citizens of Lakewood.
To the citizens of Lakewood.
Do solemnly promise and swear.
Do solemnly promise and swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And the laws.
And the laws.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution and statutes.
The Constitution and statutes.
Of the state of Ohio.
Of the state of Ohio.
And the amended charter and ordinances.
And the amended charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Lakewood.
Of the city of Lakewood.
And I will faithfully perform.
And I will faithfully perform.
The duties of Finance Director.
The duties of Finance Director.
In the city of Lakewood.
In the city of Lakewood.
To the best of my ability and understanding.
To the best of my ability and understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Are you sure? We, we don't mind.
They want a picture. They were filming you. Come on.
All right, we'll move to receive and file the oath of office.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item five, Reports from Committee of the Whole Held August 29, 2024, and September 3, 2024.
Colleagues, Committee of the Whole met on August 29 at 6:00 PM, and again tonight at 6:00 PM, both for the purpose of reviewing candidates to fill the Ward Two vacancy. On the August 29 meeting, we reviewed the 17 applicants and narrowed the list to seven for the purposes of interviews over, beginning tonight, September 3, at the Committee of the Whole, and continuing on to September 9. We held interviews tonight on September 3 of three candidates, which were Allison Welch, Brian Higgins, and Angelina Steiner. Move to receive and file that report.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item six, Report from Housing Planning and Development Committee Regarding Meeting Held July 22, 2024.
Councilwoman Bullock?
Thank you, Madam President. Dear Councilmembers, the Housing Planning and Development Committee met on July 22 to discuss a substituted and amended version of Ordinance 41-2023 regarding adult use marijuana. The new version of the ordinance proposes a community impact fee to be paid to the city by marijuana dispensaries that would only come due should the state legislature remove or reduce the existing 3.6% payment to municipalities that host dispensaries as currently pledged by state law. In an effort to treat all facets of the cannabis industry equally, Ordinance 41-2023 also proposes to strike the existing regulation and licensure program for medical marijuana operations so that it matches the city's treatment of adult-use operations. The Law Department provides assurances that the state's existings, existing regulations and licensure programs are comprehensive. It also noted that the city has a fair amount of control over marijuana businesses via the zoning code and the nature of the conditional use permit process. In response to questions, the Law Department further assured the committee that the city would be empowered to establish additional regulations on the marijuana industry in the future if that was determined to be necessary and in the city's interest. After a thorough discussion on the above topics, the committee unanimously moved to recommend Ordinance 41-2023 for adoption by council. Respectfully submitted, Tom Bullock, sincerely. Move to receive and file that written report.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that motion passes.
Item seven, Substitute Ordinance 41-2023, an ordinance to take effect immediately to amend Chapter 779 Medical Marijuana Operations of the Codified Ordinances to provide a permitting process for both medical and adult-use marijuana dispensaries.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item eight, Ordinance 15-2024, an ordinance to take effect immediately amending Section 90502, hours open to the public of the Lakewood Codified Ordinances to include all city parks.
All right, Councilwoman Bullock, or Councilman Rader, I think we had some discussion about moving this out of Public Works and just addressing it on the floor here tonight. Is that still amenable to that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so I will first move to discharge from Public Works Committee.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And then, secondly, I will move to adopt.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, and discussion. So Director Gordon, I believe this came from you. Would you mind just telling us a little bit more about it? I know you introduced it with the original letter, but just give us a little heads up.
Sure, thank you, Madam President. This is just basically to update the ordinance that we have, to make sure that we have all of the city parks included. This was, I would say, a hand-in-hand effort with the Police Department to make sure that, you know, for sighting purposes, that we have everything included in the ordinance that we need, all the parks included, hours, and things of that nature.
Thank you. It seems pretty cut and dry looking at it, which is why we thought we could remove some committee time on, on this issue and just, we're just essentially saying all public parks and include city contractors.
Correct.
All right, colleagues, further discussion? Councilwoman Strebit.
Thank you. Director Gordon, I did have one question about this. So this is to make it consistent that all the parks close at the same time?
All the parks except Lakewood Park would be the same.
Okay, and then Lakewood Park, what's the difference with that one?
So Lakewood Park would be between hours of 11:00 PM, would close at 11:00 PM, and then Sunrise, where all the other parks would be closed from one hour after sunrise. and then Sunrise, where all the other parks would be closed from one hour after sunset to sunrise.
Okay, thank you. And are there, are there exceptions for astronomy groups, or if the Northern Lights happen to show up again here, that people would be allowed to go to the park?
So, if you look at Section E, it says the Director of Public Works may permit certain areas of parks to remain open after established hours.
Thank you.
Good question. Any further discussion or questions? Councilman Rader.
Yeah, just to reassert that this is just a process of cleaning up the code. I really appreciate the Public Works Department, as well as the Building Department and the departments, for going through and addressing issues as we find them. And we have many parks, and this just includes all the parks under the same sort of timeframe. And to my understanding, it doesn't only change the operation. Is that correct, Mr. Gordon? This is just sort of like the operation, the law reflecting the operation.
You guys caught me off-guard tonight. Yes, no, it will not change anything with operations. Again, this is just strictly to update the ordinance itself.
All right, any further discussion?
Madam President.
Councilman Bullock.
So, I'm trying to recall, I believe that a few years ago, there was some discussion about what the closing, a few years ago means, five years ago, six years ago, so before a lot of us were working on this. There was some thoughtful discussion about what the heart closure time should be, and I guess I want to express, I think that is not a technical matter, but a public matter that the members, you know, the community cares about, that members of council who whose job it is to work for the public care about. So, I just want to make sure, I think what we're saying is that that's consistent throughout the code, and that you caught one area where, which accidentally implied something different, and that you're proposing to make the wording consistent in this section of the law, as well as the other sections of the law, but we're not trying to change the opening and closing hours, and that if we ever do want to come to circle back around to that issue, that all of us would talk about that as a, you know, as a city council on behalf of the community. I just want to signpost that I think that that's a decision that the community should make, and not it be something that's just technical with how we work with contractors. That make sense?
Yeah, so, basically to summarize, when we looked into this ordinance, we found certain parks were not included with the ordinance, so we wanted to make sure all of the parks were included within this ordinance. That was the only change we made to this. And the other change we made was if a city contractor is, you know, working in a park at a certain timeframe, that's why Section B shows, or a city contractor, along with Section C. So, no changes to it, no changes to park hours, no changes, anything along those lines. Again, we just wanted to make sure we had all of the parks listed.
Very good, okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, any further discussion or questions? All right, so, hearing none on the motion to adopt. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item nine, communication from President Keppel regarding recodification of ordinances.
Dear colleagues, the Lakewood Codified Ordinances is a living document continuously updated by City Council. Approximately three times a year, new adopted ordinances are batched together and sent to the American Legal Publishing to be incorporated into the codified ordinances. The following ordinance authorizes American Legal Publishing to perform one of these routine updates for the city. Should City Council adopt additional new legislation to amend the code during the process of three readings, I will introduce a substitute ordinance to include those items. Move to receive and file this communication.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item 10, ordinance 16-2024, an ordinance to take effect immediately to approve the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances as parts of the various component codes of the codified ordinances and to provide for the publication of that new matter.
Move to defer. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item 11, communication from Councilmember Marks regarding LSWAB trap and release program.
Councilmember Marks.
Thank you. Dear colleagues, as council liaison to the Lakewood Animal Safety and Welfare Advisory Board, I would like to bring forth to council for consideration the attached recommendations from LSWAB on how to improve Lakewood's community stray cat problem through a trap-neuter-return TNR program. Community cat issues have been an ongoing problem in certain neighborhoods of Lakewood for years now. TNR programs are a proven method to manage and reduce the stray cat population in a humane manner. LSWAB has been working closely with the community stakeholders and the animal shelter over the past few months to implement a small TNR program. The goal of these recommendations is to further improve upon the program. Please refer this communication and its attachments to a committee of councils choosing for further discussion.
Thank you. I will move to refer to public safety.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? We do have some folks signed in to speak on this, so first I'll call up Cara Flaschler. Cara, you know the drill.
Good evening, Council President Keppel, newly minted Vice President Baker, congratulations. Members of council, Mayor George, new Finance Director Mahoney, and members of the administration. My name is Cara Flaschler, and I am the President of the Citizens Committee for Lakewood's Animals and Shelter, also known as CCLAS, or CLAWS. Our organization strongly supports this ordinance update, which clarifies aspects of the animals running at large section of the code, and specifically defines aspects of trap-neuter-return, or TNR, to permit and encourage it in our community. TNR is a proven humane solution to managing the community cat population, which benefits both the stray cats and our residents in our city. By allowing TNR, we can effectively reduce the number of homeless cats in our neighborhoods without resorting to inhumane methods like euthanasia, which has been proven ineffective in managing the homeless cat population. This ordinance update will help stabilize the homeless cat population, prevent the spread of diseases, and reduce nuisance behaviors like spraying and fighting. Moreover, it will relieve pressure on our local shelter, allowing the staff to focus on our adoptable animals. This approach promotes coexistence between our residents and community cats while aligning with our community's values of humane treatment and responsible animal care. This ordinance update is a result of extensive collaboration and advocacy, which I am deeply grateful to all who worked hard to provide the research and input, and to all who supports this effort, especially the hard work of the Lakewood Animal Safety and Welfare Advisory Board and its chairperson, Erin McDonald. Together, we can make a lasting impact on our community, ensuring a safer, healthier environment for both people and animals. We urge you to pass this ordinance update, and we are confident in doing so. Our municipality will serve as a model for others to follow. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Great, thank you. And next, Mary Puno. Mary, I think you know the drill, too.
Mary Puno, 12223 Madison, council mayor. You know, I'm not a very good public speaker, so bear with me, I'm going to soldier through. And I got four pages down to one and a half. On July 9th of this year, my husband and I emailed a letter to each member of council and the mayor's office, and I'd like to speak in just bullet points, because I assume everybody read it. First of all, I believe TNR is cruel to cats. For everyone who has seen a cat torn up by another cat, or a wild animal, or seen a cat that survives being hit by a car, you know how sad, slow, and horrible that death is. People for the ethical treatment of animals also oppose TNR on these grounds, and believes in a more humane, quick death. At large, second point, at large, cats pose a threat to native wildlife. Cats are a non-native invasive predator. According to the Audubon Society, federal and free-roaming cats kill more than 2 million birds annually in the U.S. Third, cats carry diseases and parasites. Toxoplasmosis can easily be spread through the feces of cats, and according to the CDC, toxoplasmosis is considered a leading cause of death attributed to foodborne illness in the United States. Roundworms can also be deposited in the soil through feces. As someone with a vegetable garden, this is very concerning to me. Next point, stray cats damage property. I think everybody's got a story about destroyed window screens and lawn furniture that I think we've all heard them. Next point, there are no scientifically verified and repeatable studies that prove TNR works. At best, it's anecdotal. I would like to refer you to the University of Florida paper I mentioned in my email. For that matter, some of the studies even report an increase in cat populations due to the TNR program. And this needs to be more than just a feel-good exercise. Next point, TNR will disguise irresponsible pet owners who allow their pets to roam free under the guise of, "My cat's indoor/outdoor, but it's part of TNR." We do not live in the country with acres of land and barns that need a good mouser or two. We're in the city. Now, should the city attempt an experiment regardless of the health and safety concerns of residents, we would ask that you, that it have an established time limit with specific parameters to see if the experiment even works. Just off the top of my head, 20% a year from the original number, something, you know, more than just, again, feel-good. We would also strongly request that quantifiable metrics be established, publicly available, and regularly posted. We further request that adjacent neighbors be warned which yards will entertain TNR feeding stations, so they may be extra vigilant about the safety of their own pets and their children. We also request that plans be put into place should a cat attack someone or another pet, similar to the plans for dog attacks. We also strongly feel that any trapped cats be tested and treated for toxoplasmosis and parasites before being released. Assuming the ultimate goal of TNR is to eliminate free-roaming cats, I disagree with the stipulation that removing the public safety director oversight. Again, if it's not monitored, it opens the door for irresponsible cat owners to allow their cats to roam free. Finally, there are an awful lot of places in the proposed revisions that fail to mention and cats. And rather than going into detail, I'll just rattle off the numbers, because everybody's got it in front of them, but 505.02, 505.02, Section C, 505.02, Number 4, 505.03, First Paragraph, 505.03, Sections A, B, and C. None of them say anything about cats, they're strictly about dogs. My fear is that removing restrictions on cats will only exacerbate the problem. Oh, good.
You're free. Thank you, Mary, I appreciate you speaking with us. All right, and I'm sure there'll be a lot more further discussion in committee about this, and we'll probably, I won't speak for the public safety chair, but I'm sure that we'll be also inviting the SWAB to join on that topic. Okay, I don't see anyone else signed in to speak on this, but I'm going to double-check myself since I've been a little, okay. All right, great. All right, so we have a motion in a second to refer to public safety. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item 15, communication from Councilmembers Bullock, Marks, and Strebig regarding evaluation of August 2024 storm outages, preparation, and recovery.
All right, who's taking lead on this? Councilman Bullock?
Thank you, Madam President. Dear Mayor and members of council, the storm of August 2024 affected Lakewood and many other areas of northeast Ohio, resulting in a long-enduring, far-reaching outage of both electric power and communications networks, greatly impacting Lakewood residents and businesses and creating safety hazards for many. City of Lakewood personnel and utility repair crews worked overtime in storm recovery, and we thank them for their efforts. Given the magnitude of the storm and its impacts, a review of emergency management and storm recovery preparations and performance is called for. What lessons have been learned from the storm and from storm recovery? What went well? What was unsatisfactory? What can the City of Lakewood improve, both in our own efforts and in coordinating with other government agencies and utility companies? Importantly, much of this is beyond the City of Lakewood's direct control, but acutely affects our residents all the same. In particular, electric service outages were, excuse me, electric service outage was extensive in reach and duration in Lakewood. What steps can the utility take to prevent damage or reduce its magnitude, and what could be done to shorten recovery time? Second, mobile phone service during the crisis was nearly inoperable for at least one major provider, and the long outage magnified safety risks for residents with medical needs confined to their homes. Third, wired communication service was greatly disrupted, I'm talking about internet service, with outages continuing even after power was restored in some cases. Of note, the severity of communication networks' outages is magnified by one cause not directly related to storms, and that is the great increase in the number of households relying solely on mobile telephones and lacking traditional wired telephone service. According to national statistics, a staggering 71.7% of U.S. adults, that's 180 million, now rely solely on wireless phones, and landlines are becoming a thing of the past. Therefore, to be effective, city emergency communications must incorporate plans and tools and measures that can work even during a mobile network outage. The recent storm provides a learning opportunity on this essential point. We request that these questions be reviewed in a formal and systematic manner so that our plan for the next severe storm is as strong as it can be, and so that our recovery work is quick and effective. We respectfully request a referral of this communication to a council committee for further discussion, insight, and deliberation. Sincerely.
All right, so, I'm sorry, which committee did you, did you have one in mind in particular? Do you have a preference?
I offer Public Works.
Yeah, Councilman Rader.
I would offer Public Works Sustainability, it'd be a good intimate sort of environment, and I'm sure all members would be welcome to. But it's a conversation I'd love to have as well, particularly to ask these questions with the utility directly, as it relates to prioritizing to how they decided to turn certain neighborhoods on and certain parts of town, or they want to get it. So, I'd want to thank, too, the sponsors, this is a great topic, and I would love to host it. Totally up to you, though, if it's something you feel like you'd want to take on in Committee of the Whole.
I think it's appropriate to do Public Works and Sustainability, and I know that that was, you were particularly interested in talking with utility companies, and I'm sure they'd love to hear from you as well. So, I will move to refer to Public Works and Sustainability.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion? Councilwoman Marks.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Councilman Bullock for putting this communication together, I appreciate it. And, you know, I was pretty involved during the electrical outage here in the city, and everybody was working so hard, the Public Works Department, the administration, I mean, it was just, you know, like, probably not a once-in-a-lifetime storm, we'll probably have more, but I think it's a great idea for us to get together and determine what worked, what didn't work, and what could we do better. So, I welcome this conversation. Thank you for bringing this communication forward.
No comments? Discussion, mother colleagues?
I'll just take this opportunity, since we haven't been back here since that storm, I just want to express my deep appreciation to our city staff, who went above and beyond in really every department. I mean, immediately after the storm, I was out gathering our trash and recycle cans, which were in my neighbor's front yard, and I saw Public Works trucks going by, clearing debris off the street. debris off the street. I don't think the sirens stopped going for, like, a week, and I'm sure you guys are, you know, with the public safety forces, we're stretched very much, and we appreciate that constant work. Our human services department, small but mighty, as I always say, was working overtime to make sure folks had access first at Hayes and then at Cove, and were getting meals, and just know it was all hands on deck. So I appreciate that. And Mayor George and our public safety director also, you know, really appreciate everyone's hard work. So just wanted to take this opportunity to say that on the record, since this is our first time back together, so I appreciate everyone's hard work on that. And, you know, it was very challenging, to the point of this communication, you know, our house was one of the ones that did not have power or cell service or internet for, like, a week, and it was very challenging to be able to be part of the solution when I couldn't hardly communicate with anyone. And I came to City Hall one day, and our Wi-Fi was down here, too, so I was like, what am I supposed to do here? So it is really challenging, and I think it's worth particularly looking at how we can work with the utility companies. Given climate change, we know that it's not impossible that we'll see more of these extreme weather events. So definitely good to be prepared and do everything we can to be prepared moving forward.
Yeah, Madam President.
Yes.
One more observation. I mean, obviously, we can control what we can control, but there's also a bunch of other agencies, the county government plays a role. They may or may not choose to call upon the state. And I know that one request was made for additional mobile tower service to provide service to the neighborhoods of Lakewood that were out for many, many, many hours, and we were told no, that the mobile provider would not deliver that service to the city. Don't know why. So it's, the challenge here is that the solution is concentric circles that are bigger and broader than just the folks in this room. But for us to coordinate, you know, is challenged because, you know, the county's emergency notification tool is a telephone call, and if your telephone service is down, what does that do? The other, you know, I got constituent calls from people who had surgery four or five days before, non-life-threatening, but they couldn't get out of their street to get to their medical appointment. So it's an example of how something that's not an emergency could increase in severity if we experienced sustained outages of the communications. So that's a new challenge, I think, and I know that a lot of Lakewood residents experienced that, and I don't know what the solution is, but I'd love us to get our hands around it as soon as we can so that it's not a health impacts issue in the future. Thanks.
Vice President Baker, and then we'll go to you.
Yeah, I echo Council President's comments about city all staff. I know most of them probably had homes without power and limbs all over them, so appreciate all of the work. Street sweeper was out next morning cleaning twigs and branches and all that kind of stuff. And I would point the committee to the Resiliency Task Force update to our community vision that talked about resiliency planning and ways in which our city can and should become more resilient to things like this. There's lots of good information in there that may be helpful in the committee discussion.
Thank you, and then Councilman Rader.
Thank you, Madam President. Oh, yeah, be happy following on Councilman Bullock's remarks. Be happy to work with Councilman Bullock to develop maybe some more questions following from these points. And then from there, we can figure out who we need to have with this committee, open to whoever we need to sort of call in and try to work with their schedules, and I think that's a very important point. This is concentric circles of groups we should be talking to, and again, you know, I'm very adamant to talk to the utilities to figure things out, but certainly the county would be appropriate, whoever else you think will could work together on that, I think. If that's amenable.
Further discussion?
Just add, I still only have one bar of service in my house, so I'm happy to be taking this up with the utilities, too, myself, so, just saying. Yeah, yes, Mayor George.
I've invited Chris Alvarado from Cuyahoga County. He's the liaison with the County Executive's Office, so to talk a little bit about how we interface with county EMA and these types of emergencies, and then he'll certainly, and his team, will be there at the committee meeting to discuss how we interface. So, Chris, do you want to say a couple things? Thanks for being here.
Thank you very much, Mayor George. Good evening, Council President Kepel and City Council. Chris Alvarado, Director of Regional Collaboration for Cuyahoga County, the Office of County Executive Ronain. We would be delighted to come to the committee meeting to really talk about what our experiences have been, not just working with the tremendous staff here with the City of Lakewood, but also what was happening across the region. I mean, this was a storm that we haven't seen since 1993 in terms of the number of folks who were without power in northeast Ohio. I think it was 400,000 folks were without power at some point. There were five separate EF1 tornadoes that had hit, and it's important for us to be resilient as well, and to have a system that's able to work for all of our citizens regardless of what the emergency is. And so we've already begun talking, myself, we've got Director Brandy Carney with the County Department of Public Safety and Justice Affairs, as well as Deputy Director Jill Smilek here. And certainly, we're happy to bring out our representatives with the Office of Emergency Management, again, to talk about our experiences and to be able to learn from what we've experienced in August.
Thank you. Thank you very much for being here and for being willing to speak with us in committee, too.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it. Any further discussion, Mayor George?
And then, yeah, we also have Kate Ingersoll's here from Healthy Lakewood Foundation, who, just before you come up, Kate, want to, again, thank you for you and your board working so swiftly to approve funds and then deploy funds, and working with our human services team to get gift cards into people's hands in real time, as people were cleaning out their fridges, throwing out food. In real time, we're giving gift cards to those most in need who don't have $300 to spend on groceries, who don't have $100 to spend on groceries. We are able to deploy those dollars quickly, and I really appreciate your partnership and the board as well. So please pass it on.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, I would just like, I appreciate this very much, and I will start by saying, and recognizing that we also know that our response did not reach everyone. And so I just want to be clear that there is always room for improvement, there's always room to increase parity and equity across our community, and our organization is very, very much focused on that. But we are grateful for the partnership with the Department of Human Services and with the mayor to be able to work so quickly together, to be able to identify a need where we could support residents in real time. And again, I, too, want to acknowledge and thank our city's first responders, fire, EMS, police, and the Human Services Department, and the Public Works Department, and the administration, and all of the city workers who ensured that we were able to weather the recent storms and prolonged power outage back in August. It feels like a long time ago. Every department worked tirelessly to assist, to provide care, to provide resources and referrals, and to ensure the safety of our residents over what became a very precarious six days for many. I also want to acknowledge the efforts of our local nonprofits, the Barton Community Center, the Lakewood Community Services Center, and Lakewood Alive for providing food, services, checking on residents, making referrals, and directing residents to safety. Staff from all of these organizations and with our Department of Human Services worked overtime to care for community members, and from my observations, there was no other municipality that provided the level of support and services during the power outage in our area. The Healthy Lakewood Foundation has a vested interest in the health and well-being of Lakewood residents, and it is often in a crisis like this one that we just experienced where we become most aware of those who are most vulnerable in our community. The reception center that was provided and was established within one day of the power outage and staffed by first responders in the Department of Human Services was a crucial resource in identifying residents in precarious conditions, and we were able to provide assistance very directly as a result. As the power outage was prolonged, with certain areas going without power for up to six days, many of our older adult residents were in particularly precarious situations. Many have met limited mobility, limited incomes, limited family support systems, and limited communication tools. City workers and nonprofits stepped in to provide oxygen, transportation, communication tools, food, and cooling stations. 10.8% of older adults in our community who are over the age of 60 live below the poverty line in our community, and it's frightening to think about what might have happened if the weather had been just 10 degrees hotter. In that week, many were without air conditioning, power, lost food, and sometimes they had limited water. We need to assess and understand the vulnerability of these residents and take steps now to ensure greater resiliency for them when another crisis occurs. We must be clear about what services the city can provide in the event of a crisis and build the infrastructure now to be even more prepared. To your point, Councilwoman Bullock, there are some aspects of this that are beyond the city's control, but we also need to assess and understand what is within our control and within the nonprofit ecosystem's control as well. And I would strongly encourage you to support nonprofits as key partners in this learning process. They were on the ground every day, serving people along with the Department of Human Services and first responders, and they should be considered experts in this crisis and in the response, and you should rely on their expertise to inform the decisions that you make moving forward. And so I strongly encourage you to do so, and to talk with the administration, and to talk with the human services workers, especially social workers who were there doing the very, very hard work of meeting those needs and meeting people where they were, often in very desperate situations, so that we can all learn from this together and use that collective learning to improve the resources that we can deploy in an event like this in the future. Thank you very much. Thank you for your partnership, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kate. And I think that that also goes to a lot of the work that, I know, we have several of our nonprofit partners involved in the continuing work of the Community Health Action Team, and talking about the concentric circles and the, you know, that work is the ongoing. I think one of those areas of focus was particularly on food scarcity and stability, as well as other health needs and living conditions and those sorts of things. So, you know, this is all parts of the same puzzle to sort of put together and figure out, because we do want to be thoughtful and have a growth mindset of what, to your point about working with the other nonprofits and taking that expertise, as well as the expertise of all the staff who are there on the ground doing this work. You know, this, I think the intention, and I hope the intention of this conversation moving forward is all of us doing the best we can for our residents and learning from what we've gone through and being prepared should unfortunately we have another huge event like this. So thank you, both of you, for being here, and again, thanks to all of our staff, and I look forward to this continued discussion.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none on the motion to refer to public works and sustainability. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that motion passes.
Item 16, communication from Public Works Director Gordon regarding LPA agreement Bunce Road rehab.
Director Gordon.
Excuse me. Thank you. Dear President Kepel and members of City Council, attached is an agreement for your consideration for the above referenced project, which is the ODOT-LPA agreement between the City of Lakewood and ODOT. The project entails the pavement replacement of Bunce Road from Lakewood Heights Boulevard to Clifton Boulevard. The project will generally include the following: replacement of pavement and curbs, addition of a shared use path, upgraded traffic signal at Athens, water main replacement, a relief sewer if needed, manhole separation and replacement of sewer laterals if feasible, sewer point repairs, catch basin replacement, removal of first energy Cobra streetlights and poles where feasible, installation of new decorative streetlights along the shared use path, ADA curb ramps, sidewalk replacement as needed, concrete-colored crosswalks, updated street signs, streetscape components, accessible pedestrian signals, leading pedestrian intervals at intersections, pavement markings, tree removal, and tree plantings, and other prudences. Design is ongoing and will be completed in 2025. The City of Lakewood will be the project lead and construction is planned to begin in the spring of 2026 and estimated to be completed by the fall of 2028. At this time, the entire project costs are currently estimated to be $21.58 million. The attached LPA agreement represents ODOT's commitment to the project with a capped amount of $5.886 million. I request that City Council approve and pass the attached agreement on first reading so that the agreement may proceed and be included with, unfortunately, this went first, with the previously mentioned OPWC grant and loan application. Please let me know if you have any further questions.
Move to receive and file that communication?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion from colleagues?
Director Gordon, this is essentially, this doesn't change any of the preceding plans, right? It's just talking really about the funding structure.
Correct, just trying to get money.
All right, we like you getting money. All right, so we have a motion and a second to receive and file the communication. Any further discussion on the communication?
One, technical, just because you're asking tonight for a full approval. How was, I know, like, ODOT went through a new LPA update with all the LPAs. Was that, did you guys get through that yet, or have they? Because they, like, updated all the spreadsheets and guidelines and all that.
So this was all, this was done, I'm not quite sure if this was done before they updated everything, but this is pretty much the set-in-stone one with them, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion on the communication? On the motion to receive and file? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that motion passes.
Item 17, Resolution 2024-52, a resolution to take effect immediately appropriating $21.58 million and authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement which would allow the City of Lakewood to participate in the Bunce Road rehabilitation project in the City of Lakewood with the Ohio Department of Transportation.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that motion passes.
Item 18, communication from Public Works Director Gordon regarding Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvement and Local Transportation Improvement Programs, program year 2026.
Director Gordon.
All right, thank you, and thank you for passing the last one. I really appreciate it. Dear President Kepel and members of City Council, the Public Works Department is recommending submitting grant and loan applications to the OPWC State Capital Improvement and Local Transportation Improvements Program for the program year 2026 for the following two important infrastructure projects, ironically Bunce Road Rehab and the CSO 052 storage facility. Please see the attached legislation required to be submitted with these grant and loan applications for these projects. I request that City Council approve and pass the attached legislation on first reading so that the grant, excuse me, so that the grant and loan applications may proceed. Please let me know if you have any further questions. So I just want to reiterate again that we're going to be including that LPA agreement that just passed with our OPWC grant, hence why these are going hand in hand.
Thank you. Move to receive and file that communication?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? And I'll just say, we appreciate all the work you do to try to bring in additional funds, very much appreciate it. Yes, Vice President Baker.
Thank you, Council President. Is 052 the one, which CSO is that?
That's the one that's going to be going where the old animal shelter was.
Okay, so down in the valley?
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
And just so everybody knows, a lot of the credit should go to City Engineer Mark Pavky on these. I'm just doing the legwork for him here.
Right, any further discussion? Hearing none on the motion to receive and file? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that motion passes.
Item 19, Resolution 2024-53, a resolution to take effect immediately authorizing the city engineer to prepare and submit applications to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvement and/or Local Transportation Improvement Programs and execution of all contracts as required.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that motion passes.
Item 20, communication from Planning Director Byington regarding Community Development Supplemental Grant Application.
Director Byington.
Thank you, Madam President and members of council. This request that the council consider approval of this resolution authorizing the submittal and if awarded, acceptance of the CDSG Community Development Supplemental Grant to Cuyahoga County in the amount of $50,000 to offset the cost of playground equipment for Robun's Park. A conceptual proposal was submitted as an example showing the kinds of equipment that could be considered. The city has received initial feedback from the public, but will be continuing to take comments as the scope of the project evolves. To date, the city had a public engagement meeting at Cove Community Center on February 28th, and there was an online survey, which was also publicized by posted signs in the park with a QR code on them. As the city progresses in the planning- with a QR code on them. As the city progresses in the planning process for the park improvements, there will be, and there will continue to be opportunities for the residents to share their ideas and their needs for the park. At this time, we are requesting that you pass this resolution on first reading as the deadline for the application occurs prior to the next city council meeting. Thank you.
Move to receive and file that communication?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item twenty-one, Resolution 2024-54, a resolution to take effect immediately authorizing the mayor or the director of planning and development to apply to the Cuyahoga County Community Development Supplemental Grant Program for a fifty thousand dollar grant to be used for the improvements at Merrill Bunce Park at the southeast corner of Bunce Road to provide a new playground and swings, safe compliant playground surfacing, a shaded paved picnic area, a path connecting through the playground and picnic area, and a drinking fountain.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Madam President?
Yes.
I think we have electronic comment, do we not?
We do. We're gonna, we're gonna get to that. Did you have another?
No, I think I read it during the day and I thought it was a thoughtful one. Now, I think Director Byington, her introductory remark may have already kind of addressed it, but it's some thoughtful feedback from a nearby resident who is looking for non-redundant playground equipment, non-redundant, playground equipment that would serve a different age group, and I thought it was a thoughtful, thoughtful bit of feedback. So, I'm glad to hear that the, the design and the public input process is ongoing. I'm glad also that we're pursuing applications for grants and so forth.
Yes, thank Council President. To Councilwoman Bullock's point, there's a couple of lines added in the letter, I think, that reflected the fact that this is for funding for playground equipment at this park, but to be clear, we do understand that this public comment can be taken into account and different equipment can be bought depending on, this is just to put the application in for the funding. All right. Thank you.
Council President Strebig.
Thank you, Council President. Director Byington, can you give me a specific cutoff date for this, when, when public comment or public suggestions are no longer necessary or the plan is in place? Because I fielded a couple of those and I think I forwarded one along to you today specifically to what Councilman Bullock was referring to in the e-communication with the playground equipment and maybe having some different suggestions for that. Do we have a cutoff date for when those suggestions are no longer valid?
Thank you, Council President Strebig. We don't have an actual date. They're just ongoing, but I think that after knowing, after hearing and receiving the forwarded emails, that we need to make a more intentional outreach to the community. So, we will do that. We will post something on our, on our website with a cutoff date so it's clear to the public how long we will accept comments.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Further discussion? All right. Hearing none on the motion to adopt. All those in favor? Aye. And that motion passes.
Item twenty-two, Communication from Assistant Planning Director Boss Regarding the Community Health Action Team Annual Report.
Who's on this? Is this Director Byington?
Yes. Thank you, Madam President and members of council. As required by Resolution 2023-09, the Community Health Action Team has met and has provided an annual report which has been submitted to you. This committee's purpose is to review and address social barriers to general health and wellness within the city. This report is respectfully being submitted to be referred to a committee deemed appropriate by City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. I will move to refer to Health and Human Services Committee.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Just say, one of, one of the downsides of becoming council president was coming off of this committee. So, it's a really, really great committee. So, I really appreciate the work they're doing and looking forward to hearing what chat's been up to, and particularly our conversation just now regarding the storm recovery too. I think it's a good time for us to be thinking about that in that context too. So, as you have that Health and Human Services Committee meeting, I'm sure you'll address that. You can help someone, Marx.
Thanks. I would just like to comment that I came on board the chat committee after you left, and I do have to say that it's a committee that works very hard in trying to accomplish their goals. So, I'm very impressed and I really look forward to this meeting.
Great. So, we have a motion and a second to refer to Health and Human Services. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item twenty-three, Communication from Chief Dunphy Regarding Healthy Lakewood Foundation Grant.
Chief Dunphy.
Dear members of council, the Lakewood Fire Department has received a grant award from the Healthy Lakewood Foundation in the amount of four thousand two hundred and seventy-nine dollars. This grant award will support the purchase of the following items for our neighborhood paramedic program: fourteen NOx boxes, twelve fire extinguishers, twelve first aid kits, twelve flashlights, smoke detectors, and carbon monoxide detectors, and twenty-four carbon monoxide detectors and fleece baby blankets. This grant does not require any matching funds from the city.
Yeah. Thank you. That's our favorite kind. All right. I'll move to receive and file that communication?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, and thank you also to the Healthy Lakewood Foundation for this and for the fire department for working on it. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item twenty-four, Communication from Chief Assistant Law Director Swallow Regarding Settlement of Bureau of Workers Compensation Claim.
Director Vargo, I'm assuming?
Dear Council President Kepel and members of City Council, attached please find a proposed resolution authorizing a seventeen thousand dollar Bureau of Workers Compensation settlement between the city and a former employee. This settlement is subject to council's approval under LCO 127.03. The law department respectfully asks that council refer this matter to the appropriate committee for discussion of the proposed settlement terms. Questions regarding the reasons or basis for the settlements would be appropriate, for the settlement would be appropriate for executive session under ORC 121.22G3. Thank you.
Thank you. Move to receive and file that communication?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item twenty-five, Resolution 2024-55, a resolution to take effect immediately authorizing the mayor or director of law to enter into an agreement with a former employee to pay seventeen thousand dollars in settlement of pending Bureau of Workers Compensation claims.
Move to refer to committee of the whole.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Director Vargo, is there a time crunch on that, this? Only because we're doing the Ward Two interviews right now, I'm just trying to figure out.
Yes. The answer is, Madam President, I don't know.
Okay.
But we're the payer. We have, we have a voice, and so we should have flexibility.
Okay.
But I don't know what we've agreed to technically.
Okay. We'll, we'll touch base and figure out scheduling so we can accommodate.
Thank you.
All right. So, we have a motion and a second to move to refer this to committee of the whole. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item twenty-six, July Finance Department Report Submitted Pursuant to LCO 11103.
Move to receive and file?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item twenty-seven, Liquor Permit Regarding Wine Dive LLC.
Councilman Baker?
I see no statutory reason to object.
All right. I'll move to file without objection.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item twenty-eight, Liquor Permit Regarding Wet Management LLC.
A lot of liquor license in Ward One. I see no statutory reason to object.
All right. I'll move to file without objection?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item twenty-nine, Liquor Permit Regarding Get-go Operating LLC.
Oh, we gotta change Ward Three. Councilwoman Strebig.
No objections.
All right. Move to file with no, without objection?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes. All right. So, we are at general public comment. I don't have anybody else on my sheet. Know anybody over there? All right. No. Hey, all right. All right. Well, wonders never cease. Okay. So, I'll just take a moment. I want to welcome our new intern, Devon G. Mizra, is a junior with Case Western and, right? Yeah. And as, this is our first council meeting, so directors, and please go over and say hello, and council colleagues as well if you haven't already, and welcome. We're so glad to have you with us. Thank you for joining us, and thank you to Councilperson Strebig and our council staff for going through that interview process. I know we had a lot of fantastic candidates, and we got, we got a really good one. All right. Further announcements from colleagues? Vice President Baker.
Thank you, Council President Kepel. Bike and hike week for Lakewood City Schools is September ninth through the thirteenth. Lots of credit goes to Assistant Director Boss, the planning department, for putting together a really good kind of template, and then Bike Lakewood put together a really great kind of presentation on it. And also, if you're a driver and don't have kids in the schools, just slow the heck down. You know, don't turn right on red during the posted hours and be mindful of the little kiddos riding to school and walking to school. So, that's all. Thank you.
And thank you. I know that you and some of our other council colleagues have worked on that. Other announcements from council members? Announcements from the administration? Nothing? All right. All right. So, nothing further. I will move to adjourn.
Second.
All right. I guess we don't really have to move, do we?
You could start it.
All right. So, without objection, we're adjourned. So, without objection, we're adjourned.